Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order this public hearing for the Urbana City Council. Just an announcement, we have a public hearing and that'll be followed by the regular meeting of the Urbana City Council. So, we have a public hearing for the Urbana City Council to consider an ordinance approving an option to lease and a ground lease of the Urbana landfill complex. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans? Ms. Hershey? Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next up is public input for the purpose of the public hearing. If anyone wishes to comment on the lease of city-owned real estate, the manner of such lease, and a finding that the real estate to be leased is no longer needed for governmental purposes or proprietary activity of the city, please step up to the microphone. Okay, seeing no input, I will adjourn this public hearing. Okay, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Urbana City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans? Ms. Hershey? Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of the minutes of previous meetings of August 1st, 2022, which is the minutes of the special meeting, and then the August 8th, 2022 minutes. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Chandra. Any substantive changes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Any additions to the agenda? We do have one change, and that will be for item M. There will still be a closed session, but it's going to be for personnel, and the reference for that is 5 ILCS 120/2C1. Okay, we'll move on to presentations and public input. We have a presentation by the Urbana Free Library. It's the annual report to the city council. And library director Celeste Schout is here.
This is the time of year I love because I get to come to you and talk to you in June about the budget for this year, and now it's August and I get to come to you and talk about what we did with last year's budget. I would want to do this anyways, but it's actually mandated by the state that municipal libraries come and talk to their governing body about how they use the funds and what were the activities of the library during this period. So, I always enjoy this time, and I hope you do as well. So, one of the biggest things that the library board did this past year is to go fine free, which falls right under our four pillars of embrace, enrich, empower, and enhance the community and the staff of the Urbana Free Library. We've already heard people coming in and saying, "I didn't feel like I could have a card before because I was afraid of having fines." And so, we have already seen that happening, and that's very powerful for us. And we partner with the Urbana School District as well, so all the schoolchildren can get a card. But even knowing that they could get a card, parents were still hesitant in some cases. So, we're getting people coming back that said, "I had a card, but I was blocked," and now we're getting people that said, "I never had a card before, and now I can have it." So, we are just over the moon that it is working in the way that we thought it would, and that we are there for our community in any way. In addition, because of being thrifty, we are also able to add more benefits to staff that we talked about earlier. So, for example, we now have paid sick leave for hourly employees, we have paid parental leave for part-time and full-time employees, and we also have been continuing to offer paid COVID-19 leave, as the city does for your employees as well, and people are taking advantage of that and staying home and keeping their germs at home and getting better, and then coming back when they're healthy. And we're grateful to have that opportunity to do that. Also important this year is that we picked up the building program process with former library director and current library consultant Fred Schliff. So, we've been working with him on and off during the pandemic about evaluating the library space, what's working well about it, what isn't, what are the needs. For example, we only have two study rooms. It's not as many spaces as people would like to have. So, we have picked this process back up, and we will be doing public forums, and we'll have some ways for people to reach out in print, depending on if they want to come and Zoom with us or not, in the end of September. So, more information to follow about that, and I would love it if you could share information with your constituents, so we can get some good feedback about that process. So, one way to look at library use is to look at circulation. It's not the only way, but one way is to just see, how are people using the collection? So, as of today, this afternoon, just under 28,000 items were checked out worth just under $600,000. That doesn't include about 2,000 items that are e-content, so all are ebooks, e-videos, streaming movies, and things like that. They don't have a price in the system, so the net value would be more than that, but it's nice to know that people continue to use the library in these very physical ways. We saw with our circulation and notary and door count statistics, some of our programming numbers are down. We pulled back in programming last year because we saw that people were not as interested, especially with young children not being able to be vaccinated until far into the year. So, we pulled back and packed and put our staff resource more into the reference desk and circulation desks, having those one-on-one interactions with people, and saw that our statistics did go up in those areas. So, more people using the internet, more people having in-depth reference questions, and help needed on the internet to get the jobs, to get the government services, to connect with people on Facebook. People are talking to staff and getting the help that they need, which is really exciting and why we're here. And programming, oh my gosh, the programming that we did have was so cute, and people had such a good time. People who were able to come back and willing to come back had a great time. This was the first year in a couple of years we've been able to have the fairy tale ball back in person. So, we've got Beanbag Toss, and Make Your Own Dragon If You're a Ninja, and this little guy in the center was doing the sword fight thing, and she was in the New Book area and was so incredibly delighted with life. So, being able to have these library moments in person are really meaningful for the families, for the staff, I think for the community, be able to come together and be together again. And we had a number of programs throughout the year, fewer than before, as I said, but safe, and people really got a lot out of them. We had Poetry in the Park partnering with the Park District and with the Urbana Arts Grant. So, we had a poet teaching how one could write poetry, and we have someone writing that they looked beautiful, which was amazing. We had people doing chalk art, and on the bottom, we have a woman who talked about music with our Young Artists Studio, and then there was an instrument petting zoo, so people got to touch instruments that they wouldn't have before. And then the bottom, we have our wonderful Robyn Hayden, who is out just a couple of weeks ago, getting kids signed up for library cards at the schools. So, we love to be able to partner with our other, well, our partners in the community, other government bodies, and really get out there and serve our community together collaboratively. We talked earlier about our partnership, again, with the Urbana Free Library Foundation and the Arts and Culture Grant that we received to be able to have that Langston, Alston murals, and that was very meaningful for the people that showed up. It was, he worked with over 50 community members to paint murals on the Cunningham Township Building, and everyone enjoyed the ribbon cutting ceremony on April 22nd. And we had a person come in that said, "You had this mural on this building, and I saw it, and I took a picture, and the next day it was gone." Like, what's up with that, library? So, people did see and enjoy the temporary mural that we did have, because so many people wanted to paint, there wasn't enough space and time to be able to offer that on a permanent space. So, we are glad we could be part of the mystery of town. More programming opportunities. In partnering with libraries across the state, we put our purchasing power together with Illinois Library Presents, so that libraries of all sizes could have access to big-name authors, writers, artists, chefs. So, this year, we had Michelle Zauner from Writing the Book: Crying in H Mart, and also Japanese Breakfast, the rock and roll band, Jenny Lawson, who wrote the book Furiously Happy, and Sylvia Moreno-Garcia. They were some of the big-name speakers that came this year, and everyone zoomed together across the state. This next year, we're going to have Marlee Matlin, Caitlin Doughty, Ross Gay, and Justin Ward. And so, we're very excited that for not that much money for us as a library, we're able to present these big names, and community members can participate. We also offered with the Urbana Arts and, sorry, Culture Program, we had three cinema and sound programs. So, over 200 people came to enjoy the events, and we had live music and activities before watching an outdoor music movie, sorry. People are happy to come together and participate in community events again. The Champaign County Historical Archives hosted 49 programs last year in outreach events, including Before She Was a Mrs., Discovering Your Female Ancestors, Casting a Historic Vote, Suffrage for Women in Illinois, then Cracking the DNA Code, DNA Testing Miss in Reality, and then the annual library-wide Chanute Day. Every year, we celebrate the Chanute Air Force Base and the people who served our country there, and served our local communities as well. It was a community effort as well. So, interest in and support of the library seed exchange has continued to grow. It debuted last spring, and it was very popular then, and we received 8,000 seeds as a gift. But over the past year, we've distributed over 3,700 seeds. And I've been to some of the community events as a person, and the seed table is just mobbed with people. We've got a cute little, like, it looks like a library card that you check what kind of seeds you want, and then we would deliver them to you either at the event, or you can come pick them up from the whole desk. People are coming in and saying they're going to harvest the food and bring the seeds back. So, it is working the way we wanted it to work, in that, again, the community is coming together, and we're happy to have our partners in this. We also continue some COVID things that have made people's lives easier, including curbside pickup and e-cards. So, if you are not able to come into the library, you can register for your card online and have access to all the databases that we pay for before you come in and get your physical card. And we are moving towards being able to register for your card online with a system that will then verify your address online for us. So, that is something coming up this year, which we're excited about. It will also do automatic renewals of your library card, so you don't have to come in every three years, that it will just do it for you, because, again, we'll check your address to see that you're living where you say you are. And that will take away another barrier for people, because sometimes it's just hard to get in. We had family craft kits that were so popular, we worked with the schools, that we could hand them out at the schools as well as at the library, and some of the schools ran out within just a couple of days of receiving the kits. So, the desire to participate in hands-on experiential learning is strong in our community, which is no surprise to anyone here, and we're glad to be part of the group of people that are supporting the arts in our community. The News Gazette, our archives collection, is super interesting, and I know this is small, but I wanted to give you a screenshot of what it looks like. We had started a subject index of the Clippings file of the News Gazette, and staff work on it regularly, and we update the file on our website once a month. The file is now over 400 pages long. We're still in the S's, we haven't finished the alphabet, but what it allows you to do is be able to look for, like, the word racism, or Champaign Fire Department, Urbana Fire Department, and then see, do we have an envelope for that thing? So, we are very excited to say, over 400 pages, still going strong. Volunteers are helping us with this project, so staff developed it, set it up. We're being good stewards of taxpayer money, and volunteers are really happy to sit down with those boxes of envelopes and touch them, and put them in the computers so other people can access the information. We received over 70 separate acquisitions, including a Walker Opera House scrapbook, records from the multi-denominational religious leaders for community care, Urbana Fire Department records, and the Stephen Stortz Photography Collection, which is just a gem. It includes over 40,000 photographed negatives of events in Champaign County from the 16th to the 2010s, including a lot of weddings and things. So, a great record of our community life. Forty thousand negatives is a lot of negatives. So, we have a lifetime's worth of work in making these things accessible to our community. We're just going to keep at it, unless you want us to stop. But, pandering to the audience, sorry. We couldn't do what we do without our support of the Friends of the Urbana Free Library and the Urbana Free Library Foundation. The Friends and the Foundation both give tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars, depending on the year, to support programming initiatives, to support staffing in the archives, and library programs, books for the children and adults for summer and winter reading. We could not, we would not be the institution we are without them. And again, especially during COVID, we would not be the strong institution we are without our partnership with the city and city staff. We really relied heavily on each other to talk through all the different heart issues, and I think our partnership and strength is even stronger than it was before. And here's our information and my information. If you ever have questions, please reach out, let me know.
Any questions for Celeste? Grace?
Thank you. Thanks so much for the update. I've got lots of great notes on all of those things that I think are very innovative and effective. So, I thank you for that presentation and the work you guys are doing. This got brought up last time, but I don't remember. Could you tell me again about the news archiving with the News Gazette? I think we had a small conversation last time about why just that one, and if there was a plan to incorporate other media sources at some point? I don't know if you could refresh me on that one?
Yeah, actually, it's good that you asked, that we're working. We, when we acquired the News Gazette's morgue, they also gave us some other papers, and we have other papers that we have physically in hand, and we work with, it's very expensive to microfilm things or to scan things. So, we are working with another organization that has interest in either filming or digitizing one of the other papers. But what we have rights to right now is we have the rights to scan the News Gazette. That was part of the agreement that we have. We don't necessarily have rights to scan or make accessible in those ways the other papers.
Thank you for the explanation.
Any other questions? James?
This isn't a question. This is a thank you to you and to your staff and to the board for the Urbana Free Library, for all your work in bringing this asset that is uniformly loved in this community. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mary Alice?
So, you brought up the mural that was torn down. I heard lots of questions about that, and it seemed like it was a really popular event, and it's certainly something that's really loved within the community. Are there any other plans for murals in the library, similar events?
Not at the moment, but we were open to ideas. We have this beautiful limestone building, and I don't know that we want to paint on it.
You don't want to paint on the limestone.
We don't want to paint on the limestone. So, we are looking at other ways, and I'd like to get a photograph of that image that is no longer with us, somewhere in the library, so we can all appreciate it. But, there are some spaces, there are some walls, I'd love to see some murals, but we just need to work on some other things first.
Sure.
But if people have ideas, I'd love to talk with them.
Well, I always love how creative the library staff is, expanding the idea of what is a library and what do we do. So, kudos to you and your staff. Great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would add, one of the first murals in the city, inside or out, was in the library and still is there. It's in the children's department, and it was to honor a resident of Urbana.
Megan Spitsi?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you, Celeste, and thank you for all that you do. And we'll end this discussion of the library with a proclamation, because that's what we do. And this is in honor of Library Card Sign-Up Month. So, whereas, a library card is the most essential school supply of all, and whereas, libraries play a crucial role in the education and development of children, and whereas, libraries provide a learning environment that fosters joyful exploration, encouraging students to research subjects that they are genuinely curious about, and whereas, signing up for a library card is the first step on the path toward academic achievement and lifelong learning, and whereas, a library card gives students the tools that foster success in the classroom and beyond, and whereas, a library card empowers all people to pursue their dreams and explore new passions and interests and find their voice, and whereas, library staff create welcoming and inclusive spaces for people of all backgrounds to learn together and engage with one another, and whereas, libraries are constantly transforming to deliver new services that connect closely with community needs, even during a pandemic. Now, therefore I, Diane Wolf-Marlin, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of September, 2022, as Library Card Sign-Up Month in the City of Urbana, Illinois, and encourage everyone to sign up for their own library card today at the free and continuously wonderful Urbana Free Library. So, I'll give you this proclamation to take back with you.
Thank you, Diane.
Okay, we'll move on to council input and communications. Oh, sorry, public input. Does anyone wish to address the Urbana City Council? Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Nicholas Dale. I am a resident of Champaign, Illinois. Last week at their city council meeting, or maybe it was their study session, they talked about a low-barrier homeless shelter going in right across from the police station. As a member of the CU community, I support it wholeheartedly. I think that maybe an intergovernmental agreement should be reached between you guys and them. I know that there is a considerable amount of homeless people on the Green Street and campus area, so it does come over into the jurisdiction here. And the finances for it, they presented that it would cost 1.9 million for operating costs yearly. And I pulled from the Office of Justice Programs, their website, and I can give you guys after the meeting these links. But they, there was a study in the Criminal Behavior and Mental Health, Volume 18, Journal, that among US adult, state, and federal prison inmates, 9% had an episode of homelessness the year prior to being incarcerated. The study goes in-depth about the homeless people, about how homelessness and incarceration sometimes go hand in hand, and the finances on that relate to the homeless shelter, because the four-year 2020 data for the average cost for a federal inmate or state inmate, and it goes hand in hand with jails, too, was $120 per day, when you factor in the labor for the guards and pensions and various other aspects. So, the City of Champaign, and the City of Champaign Township, they planned to house 50 male and 10 females, so 60 people. If, let's say, the average cost here is $100 a day, because it's easy to do, to keep someone federally housed in prison, if we can keep the homeless people out of prison, we could save about $300,000 a year, because 60 people at this homeless shelter, times $100 a day, $6,000 a day, times 365 is about 2.2 million, and they're coming in at 1.9 million. So, I suggest as a community, here, we put our money where our mouths are, and we help those that need it most, because we benefit from the tax savings and we benefit from having a safer community. And I got the cost of housing an inmate from the federal register. I'm sure the attorneys here are probably familiar with that. So, it's safer because homeless people are more likely to commit property and violent crimes and have mental health issues. So, if we can get the homeless people with mental health issues, substance abuse problems, and who have been unemployed with low income to be reintegrated into society to help with those, we need a low-barrier shelter. So, I just come to you guys humbly and ask that you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to give public input? Okay, thank you. We'll move now on to council input and communications. Grace?
Thank you. Thanks for everyone in attendance tonight or remotely and for the input. On that point of input, I definitely agree with the importance of shelters, and I'm trying to scratch in my brain and remember some of the setups, because we just had that recent home presentation and home ARP funds, and some of my understanding is that a lot of those efforts are countywide already. So, I think that that would be helpful, maybe at a later meeting discussion, some clarification on what efforts are being done in the county and the various townships, especially as we're going into making some of our ARPA decisions, to kind of have an assessment of what activities are already being done. So, I think that would be helpful on a later meeting for a whole discussion item. Thank you.
Any other council input?
I would just follow up on that. We, Sheila Dodd and I have met with Andy Kornstrom from the Champaign Township to learn more about the low-barrier shelter, and there's a lot more to learn, but one of the things we did learn is that there's a great deal of space in that particular building, and it can accommodate, it's really space designed to accommodate the countywide need. So, there's opportunities absolutely for collaboration, and that, it makes sense to do so. So, okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. There is none. We'll go on to the reports of standing committees, and that will be a report from Grace Wilken.
On behalf of committee of the whole, I'd like to move the consent agenda, and I have to read all of them, right?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 2022-08-032, an ordinance approving the 2022 Amendment to the Tax Increment Financing, TIF redevelopment plan and project for the central redevelopment project area. Also, ordinance number 2022-08-033, an ordinance approving the removal of certain property from the Urbana TIF redevelopment project area number two. Also, resolution number 2022-08-061R, resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code State Motor Fuel Tax for Savannah Green Alley's rehabilitation project, and resolution number 2022-08-062R, resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code State Motor Fuel Tax for Bridge Inspections 2022 Project. Also, resolution number 2022-08-063R, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code State Motor Fuel Tax for Boneyard Creek Crossing improvements. Resolution 2022-08-064R, resolution for improvement under Illinois Highway Code State Motor Fuel Tax for Springfield Avenue from Wright Street to McCulloe Street Reservicing Project. And lastly, ordinance number 2022-08-035, an ordinance amending North Gate Planned Unit Development, Rosenkranz Holdings LLC at 1502 and 1/2 Cunningham Avenue, Plan Case 2454-PUD-22.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Jaya. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next, we have regular agenda items.
Next is ordinance number 2022-08-031, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number one omnibus.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Grace. Reports of special committees, we have none. Reports of officers, we have a staff report on the update on the lobby.
an ordinance authorizing an option to lease and a ground lease of Urbana landfill complex.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by James. Is there any discussion? Mary Alice?
I just wanted to draw attention to Scott Testa's email. I don't know if people saw that, but the property tax, since this is in a TIF district, that property tax would go into that TIF 4 for any incremental taxing for the, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Any other discussion? Grace?
Thank you for highlighting that. I think I did miss that one, so thank you for clarifying. And also just wanted to say thank you to Scott and other staff working on this. I think it's a really great creative option to use otherwise not as usable landfill space, and they're using it for the Landscape Recycling Center, the low-income solar, and now this new solar project. And I think it's a really great example of the possibility of what a city can do with a closed landfill that's not otherwise serving a purpose. So I think that's really great creative initiative, and just wanted to say thanks to everyone who helped make that happen.
Further comment? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Grace. Reports of special committees, we have none. Reports of officers, we have a staff report on the update on the lobby reconfiguration. And with us is Vince Gustafson, Deputy Director for Operations. Want to speak into the mic?
There we go. Excuse me. Ahead of our discussions upcoming on the fire station, I'd like to take an opportunity to talk about another exciting project that was approved in the capital improvement plan and is very soon getting ready to get underway here. And that is the city building wayfinding and lobby renovation project. Just to kind of start off, I'm with a little background on this particular project. It came directly out of our facilities master plan. And basically, from the plan, there were several key findings that helped us define the project scope. Number one was addressing security and safety concerns here in the facility with employees and citizens. Secondly, it was creating a notably easier and more satisfying city building experience with improved wayfinding for clearer circulation, helping folks find their way around and trying to get where they need to be much easier. And third is a redesigned police reporting window to help allow for privacy for citizens coming in to get assistance from the Urbana Police Department. I'd like to point out that the facilities master plan effort really started in 2019. However, the final recommendations came out in July 2020. So we basically kind of saw this project through the initial onset of the COVID. Well, March and April were pretty intense for us. But I do want to say that a lot of the findings, even pre-COVID, we found were applicable to the situation that we had to deal with immediately and to make some quick adjustments. And we're hoping that with some of these improvements, it'll allow us in the future to be more prepared and more able to adjust when we need to be for whatever may come next at us. So from a project implementation standpoint, this project was approved in the 2021 capital improvement plan with a project, construction project budget of just over $1.1 million. In July 2021, we engaged with a Bailey Edwards Architecture through an RFP process. They were selected to help us out with the architecture and engineering and design services. We formed a small steering committee with internal city departments that'd be affected by this project that included executive, police, clerk's office, finance, community development, and IT. So they were all actively engaged with the architecture so we made sure that everybody's needs were, that came from the study, were addressed within the scope of work. We put the project out for public bid in April of 2022. And in June, we were able to award the contract to a local firm, Barber &amp; DiAtley. It's the lowest responsible bidder for a contract of $902,500. And then as of July 2022, we were able to issue a formal notice to proceed. And currently, we are in the permitting and submittal review phase. So our facility staff and myself are reviewing submittals from the subcontractors, looking at plumbing fixtures, signage, designs, working on our security access control, going through, making sure that all the details match the design and tech and the architect's plan. So basically, this project entails five key areas in the scope of work. I'll touch on each of these individually, but that's interior and exterior signage, the police services renovations. The first floor houses our police services department, community development and finance service counter redesigns, security enhancements, and addition of an employee staff restroom toilet facility here on the first floor. Interior signage, I can see that almost every time that I visit the city building, I always encounter someone standing in the middle of the lobby, looking up and looking lost and a little confused. And we're always, always trying to help point people in the right direction and get them where they're going. So as you can see now in the picture, we've got these small little flag signs with small text that are mounted way up high. We've got these large corner signs that'll be installed that'll denote each of the departments, and they'll be clear and easy to read, as well as some additional directory signage for the doors and directory signage at the elevators themselves. The signage, the text and the colors are just representative. We're still working with the design firm on finalizing those as part of the submittal process. Exterior signage, this is kind of an oversight of the city building campus. This will involve, at each of the four corners of the property, we'll have large directional signage. And then at each entrance of the parking lot, we'll also have identifying signage showing folks where public parking is, staff parking, police department vehicle parking, and staff parking here on the other side as well, too. I think the key thing that we want to take from this, and I'll touch on this more with our police services renovation, is that our wayfinding signage from the corners to the lot is going to be set with the goal of directing all foot traffic and vehicle traffic to the southeast entrance for police department services. So that the lobby area on the southeast side is going to be repurposed for that. So we'll have wayfinding signage around the building at various strategic locations to make sure that we're getting folks coming here for city hall and other government functions. Try to direct the traffic, the foot traffic through into the north entrance while folks coming to see the purposes of the police department. We'll be utilizing these parking areas here on the east side of the building and directing those folks into the southeast entrance. These pictures are representative of the scale of the sign. The taller signs here will be at the four corners of the campus. And then at each entrance to each of the parking lot, we'll have these areas denoting where public parking is and trying to, like I said before, keep the police department parking routed around to the east side of the facility here. So that leads me into renovations for the police services area. The study, the space needs and programming, really, I think across the board, it came out that there was major concerns regarding privacy for folks who came here to access the police department and their services. With the current service window where it's orientated now, often police officers will come out and have those conversations in the lobby just right there where we have folks coming in to pay parking tickets and coming in to get a billing permit or coming for a meeting in the council chambers. And it's really not conducive to safe and really it's not inviting for folks to come in and have to have those personal conversations in a space out in the open. So with this configuration, we'll be relocating the service window. I don't know if you can see my icon from where it is currently. We'll be relocating the service window to the southeast foyer area there. And with our dedicated signage leading folks into this area, it's going to be dedicated for just police department waiting. We'll be able to add a couple additional waiting chairs here. And in addition to that, if you can see this corridor entrance where now it leads directly into the private police department space, we'll have a corridor area there where we'll have two private interview rooms. So if someone wanted to have that conversation in private, they'd be able to come in here and either wait for an officer or they could have that in a nice closed setting. We're also, there is a restroom in this area, but we're going to make that available for public use as well, too, for the police department. And then that'll reconfigure the new entrance for police staff into a new revised open working area there. This is another representative view of the lobby area with the new service window. The picture on the right, we have an existing door in the vestibule there. We're going to be moving that door about 10, 15 feet to the north, adjacent to where the existing city clerk entrance is. That'll allow for a little more space within that, within this new police services vestibule with some additional seating and waiting area there. Moving on to the other areas of work, we're going to be redesigning the finance department service area. Right now, the service window is orientated north to south between these two pillars. We determined in space needs and programming that this existing vestibule area was highly underutilized. So by rotating the service counter 90 degrees east-west, we'll be able to recapture a little bit of the footprint and space to keep the service activities separate and add a little more footprint here for additional workspace for those employees. The community development service area, currently this is wide open. So we've had to have plastic hanging down from the ceilings there throughout COVID and as well as just employee security and safety, having those employees fully exposed out there. We want to provide a nice, safe working environment for them as we do with the clerk's office and with the finance office as well. So we'll be relocating the door, a secure door here and then full wall to our floor-to-ceiling service counter area for those staff, too. Then we don't have to continue with plastic and that sort of setup like we have for the past few years. And then we have a small copy room area that is underutilized according to our communications with staff. So we're adding a small, single-use staff restroom toilet facilities while we're still maintaining the public restrooms that are there now. I think most importantly, and one of the key things that came from the study was the need for security enhancements here within the building. First, we've included bollard lighting for the majority of our folks who park in the north parking lot when we're leaving for evening meetings. And it's dark, especially this time of year, and as we move into winter, we'll have fully lit bollard lighting that will get us here to the main north entry to keep that area well-lit. We're going to do a little selective pruning in here with our in-house staff, too, just to raise the limb levels up for better visibility. Our vestibule door locking system, while we have one in place right now, it was a sort of a piecemeal, quick, thrown-together solution, magnetic locks that it operates solely on a time clock that has to be manually programmed. So anytime there's a need to shut down the facility or change the hours for which we're shutting down the facility, that requires our staff to come in and literally on a ladder, open the control cabinet and reschedule and program. We are going to be moving ahead with magnetic locks for these all-interior and exterior vestibules that'll allow us to close individually all at once or whatever at any time merely with the flip of a button. So at any time, police services representatives, if need be, could adjust the time and open and close the doors as need be. And something, for as long as I've been here for 18 years, that we've always been really, really needing badly was a card access control system. Currently, all of the delineation between our private and our public spaces are with what we call standalone battery-coded locks. So anytime that there's a security concern or an issue or just a systematic need for us to change a door code, it requires us to physically go from each door and to reprogram each individual door lock. And then we have to send a communication out to management to disseminate that and new codes down to their staff. Card access control, it's industry standard now. You see it almost everywhere you go. So we'll be able to issue all of our employees' cards that we can activate, deactivate, adjust permissions, and also be able to monitor and track, for security reasons, who was where and why. So with the scope of this project, initially, it's only going to be incorporated into the new doors and the new work for the lobby. However, we've, the installation that we've put into place here, it's expandable. So at the conclusion of this project, there's another $220,000 allocation in the facilities capital improvement plan to basically expand this out through the remainder of the building. And then strategically, we'll be able to put this place in other facilities, public works. And then as we design our new fire stations, this will be the standard moving forward. So from a schedule perspective, we've already got some initial exploratory work going on with a few parts of our terrazzo tile that have to be replaced. So they're working on that. But we're currently about four to five weeks out from start of construction. Depending upon a few facing issues that we're working through, we believe that the project from start to finish will last approximately 20 weeks. We're not anticipating at this time any interruptions of council meetings as a result of the construction. We may have to relocate a few service windows between finance and community development and some shared space with the clerk's offices, those particular parts of the project are going on. And at this time, we're looking at a two-phased approach for the police services area. We'll put up a temporary half-wall that will keep the main service window in operation while they install the new service window. And the other half will do a temporary move to the new service window, and then the construction activities will take place on the other side. So our key goal is to keep everything functioning and our operations going. It may be a little disruptive at times, but between the general contractor and our facility staff, we'll do our best to provide routine updates as to where and how those impacts will take effect and work with city staff just to keep things going the best we can throughout the 20 weeks or so we anticipate to get through the project. So at this point, I'll take any questions?
Any questions for Vince? Chandra?
I'm just curious if construction will be in this hallway. Will that door, like, will people be able to come in and out of this door? Or will they have to be rerouted?
There may be some times where we do have to redirect traffic from the southeast entrance, foot traffic from the southeast entrance around through the north side. When that's taking place, we'll have signage up directing folks to the correct way through.
Okay, thanks.
Mary Alice?
So based on your presentation, I think, is it fair to say that the biggest impact for the public in terms of going to different offices and so forth would be where the police window is? That's the biggest impact for the public?
Correct. Our main goal with the signage is to try to direct that traffic through to the southeast entrance. So, and that's mainly just to keep a delineation of services. However, it's perfectly understandable that I know that no matter how many signs you put up, occasionally we may have folks coming in through the north door, but that's perfectly fine. They'll still be able to access through the main lobby into the police waiting area.
So the areas that really are going to be kind of untouched are the chambers and the clerk's office?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Grace?
Thanks for the presentation. Trying to visualize it, I don't know if, would it be possible to send us this presentation with your layout? And even if you have like the current blueprint for comparison? Like, is this the whole lobby or that's the back part of the police area here?
This layout right here just represents the police services, the police services area. If I were to come back to, this is representative of the project's scope area where we have the community development offices, the finance, the council chambers entrance, police services, and the new proposed, or the new to come, I should say, lobby vestibule waiting area. But I'd be glad to share. But I'd be glad to share this presentation with you tomorrow.
Thank you. And so the police service window is still close to where it is currently, right? But there's just additional space or that's not it anymore? What is it? Oh, now it's there. Okay.
So currently, there's a little kitchenette area where the proposed window is. We have to relocate that to where the existing window is to accommodate the new space. So there'll be some improvements within the workspace because we did lose some footprint to accommodate the corridor and the additional interview spaces. So we're adding some efficiencies in regards to workstation and working with the police department in regards to file and document storage. They're doing some of their due diligence to reduce the onsite file storage that they keep there in the police services area to accommodate the corridor and the interview areas.
Thank you. And so if the public were to come in that front door, that door to the lobby to the police area is unlocked too, so they can just walk in that way?
There will be free access from the lobby into the police area, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's helpful and I can definitely see the benefits for this. And it definitely can be confusing trying to find your way around in the lobby. And I know you said the signs aren't set yet and it sounds like you've got good input on, you know, how to clarify things. One, on one of your slides was like police department parking, for example. I wasn't sure if that was referring to like staff or where you're trying to get the public to enter for the police department?
Yeah, that's what we're working with, with the architect and the sign developers right now to make sure that the exact text is clear. These are representative drawings from the original planning efforts.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you Vince.
We'll move on to new business and under that we have several appointments. The first two are to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. First is for a term ending June 30th, 2024, and it's Daniel Safir. Daniel's a two-year resident of Urbana. He works as a planner at the Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit District. He plans bus stops and routes, schedules and manages ridership and operations data for state and federal entities for formula grants. And he assists with bicycle education grants or events. His statement included, "The statement, 'I moved to Urbana two years ago from my current job in transportation planning. I don't own a car, nor do I feel the need to get one as I can usually rely on existing transit service and bicycle infrastructure. I'm interested in finding ways to dovetail transit planning with bicycle planning as I'm passionate about increasing physical access to our community and because I am bicycle transit dependent.'" And the second appointment to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission is for a term ending June 30th, 2023, and that's Yusuf Shaw. He's a one-year resident of Urbana. He's a project manager at the National Center for Supercomputing Applications. He coordinates NCSA's portfolio of research and development programs and projects and advises on strategic planning and performance metrics. And he states, quote, "When my family and I arrived in Champaign County, we specifically chose to live in Urbana to provide us the opportunity to be able to walk or cycle to work, school and run day-to-day errands. This board serves as an excellent opportunity for me to get to know Urbana, to give back to the community and to use my prior personal and professional expertise to better inform how Urbana can continue to grow as a bikeable and walkable city. Though I work full-time at the moment, I am happy to commit to this commission and give the necessary time and energy to ensure it succeeds in its mission." And then the final appointment is to the Civil Service Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2025, and that is for William Bill Gray. Bill is a retired twenty-nine-year resident of Urbana. He served as the City of Urbana Public Works Director and City Engineer for twenty-six years. He's currently serving in the third year of a three-year term as trustee on the Urbana Parks Foundation. He writes, "As Director of Public Works, I was intimately involved with those matters that come before the Civil Service Commission as they pertain to the Public Works Department. I believe my work experience would be valuable in serving on the Civil Service Commission. I also view this opportunity as a way of serving the community that has been so good to my family and me. So I would appreciate approval of these three appointments." And it will entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Daniel Safire and Yusuf Shaw to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, term ending June 30th, 2024, and Bill Gray to the Civil Service Commission, term ending June 30th, 2025.
Just to clarify, Yusuf's term is 2023.
Yes, sorry.
I'll second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? All those, do we need a roll call?
I just had a quick question about the term length differences since we were clarifying it. Is there a reason why they're different lengths?
It usually is dependent on the term that ended before them. So some of these may be filling out an incomplete term, some of these are staggered terms as well. So this is a large commission and people have started and ended at various times. I would love it if everyone, well, no, we need staggered terms. We need staggered terms. Okay, could we have a roll, all those in favor or roll call? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. Thank you very much. And next item on the agenda is discussion. New fire stations number two and three. And this continues the conversation that was started at the meeting last week. And leading this discussion is Will Kolchowski, Mike Phillips, Vince Govstason and Jason Estes.
I'd like to give a little intro before they launch in. And we decided that we were going to go back in time a little bit so that, because I feel like people might be, you know, coming into the middle of the movie here and there's a long history and we want to make sure that everybody's aware of what that history is. But as you listen to the presentation, I'd like you to listen, I'd like you to think about the fact that there's really three different layers of issues that have led us to the point where the fire stations need to be replaced as well as the considerations that we need to make as we figure out which model we want to go with or which combination of models we want to go with because it's not just a A-B-C. We can combine things. But the three layers are, one is about physical condition. And Vince is going to talk about that in the context of the facility's master plan effort that we went through. He made reference to it sort of briefly with the lobby reconfiguration. But he's going to do a little deeper dive so that people who haven't been here for that whole thing can understand that. That's just physical condition. That's just treating fire stations as a physical asset. And then there's two other considerations that you'll hear from Jason about, you'll hear from Mike about. And those are operational considerations about just delivering the service that the fire department provides to the community. And then the third layer is the safety considerations that are unique to the fire service, to the firefighters and how they are physically affected by the facility that they live in and work in. So those are the three kind of layers I'd like you to keep in mind as the presentation goes forward. And I know that Vince is going to kick it off and turn it over to you.
Thanks Carol. I think I'll start off on a personal note. I've been with the city for over eighteen years now, starting off in building maintenance technician. So just to be able to sit here and have a conversation about these exciting projects and actually seeing them literally coming out of the ground and seeing construction getting started and having these engaging conversations about new fire stations. It's more than I've seen in my entire career here. So just start off on that positive note that this is exciting for me personally and I'm glad to help out. I think that the takeaway from when I watched the discussion last week and Tim wanted to be here on for Tim Cowan, Public Works Director, he had a family emergency. So thinking of him tonight, but I just wanted to say, I heard the question like, well, why are we even doing this? So thanks to Carol, I thought it'd be a good idea to take a step back and do just a kind of a recap on the facility's master plan effort, which is really an extensive, long thought, well-thought-out, drawn-out process that kind of led us to this discussion yesterday or last week and then today as well too. So from a historical perspective, facilities seem to be kind of on the back burner in regards to capital improvement. There was a minimal allotment into the supplementary facilities capital improvement fund to the tune of about $50,000 for general discretionary spending. And everything else beyond that was an individual budget ask each year. So we ran into a situation where facilities funding large-scale projects, say like a roof that could cost upwards of $100,000 to $200,000, were competing with other capital improvement projects like roadways and sidewalks and sewers, all very important projects. But a facility is an asset just as in any other asset in the asset class here in the city that we maintain. And it's essential to our ability to provide services. So we're very fortunate with Mayor Marlin. When she was elected, she immediately recognized that our facilities were quickly degrading beyond the point where we had the staff and capability and resources to maintain them. So we set a very strategic goal of analyzing the situation and coming up with a plan for correction. And that plan started in 2018 with a request for proposals for facility's master plan services. And I'll read this just because it really is the guiding statement for what we're trying to accomplish with this. And that's the development of sound, actionable and fiscally responsible facilities planning that supports the entire city government organization by providing safe and inviting work environments that meet the varying operational needs of all city departments. And at the end, this process, we are looking for a document, a guiding plan that focuses on the preservation and potential redevelopment or readapting of current facilities as well as the identification and planning of new facilities to establish a framework for the anticipated city of Urbana facilities needs for the next decade and beyond. We wanted to be sure that we're leaving something well behind and well thought out for those who come behind us. And I can say, given the scope of work, I mean, knowing intimately, you know, the condition of the facilities, trying to figure out how we were going to tackle this, we decided it was best to break it up into three phases. So the first phase of the project was a facilities condition assessment. The second phase was space needs and programming. And then finally, that led into phase three was development of a strategic facilities master plan. To assist us with that, we employed Kenon Design and Architecture Firm from Chicago, Illinois. And I think they did a good job on delivering that for us. I'll start off with phase one, which is a facilities condition assessment, which was completed in June of 2019. A facilities condition assessment answers four questions. It identifies what we own, what's the condition of each asset, what are the needs currently, immediately, and what are the needs projected over the next ten years? And what's the best strategy or plan to implement to make the needed corrections? The methodology we employed for this was very detailed. It involved onsite visual observations with Kenon Design staff. They sent three or four representatives for almost a full week with myself personally and our facility staff. We toured every single individual facility on our list. We took photo documentation all the way down to the smallest components. So as you can see here, we built a bottom-up from the smallest detail all the way up to the top of the full condition of a facility. For example, we looked at wiring devices, we looked at electrical distribution panels, we looked at lighting, we looked at emergency lighting. And we formed a condition and assessed value and cost to correct those deficiencies to define the system, which is the electrical system. We did the same thing for plumbing. We looked at the lavatories, we looked at the toilets, we looked at the plumbing fixtures, the water heaters. And we took all those individual elements and created a rating for the system. Likewise, through the building envelopes, likewise through the carpeting, the finishing, the wall trim. And with all those conditions of systems, we were able to come up with a prioritized rating for each individual facility. So this was very detailed, this was very thorough and a lot of analysis went into this process. Each of the systems, based upon their current condition, were given a priority. Priority one was critical, potentially critical, necessary, and then recommended so that each system had a ranked status and priority. And each of those systems led into, contributed to what we call the industry standard and a benchmark metric called the Facilities Condition Index. So by looking at all of the deferred maintenance, by looking at all these individual components and the systems, we were able to assign a dollar value to the deferred maintenance of each individual facility. And when you divide that by the current replacement value, that gives you a quantitative, data-driven metric for which we can actually look and assess the condition of our facilities, benchmark them across internally within the city organization, but also look at them on a nationwide benchmark, how we rate, rack and stack against other organizations in the nation. So what did we find? On average, our facilities were found, as I anticipated and we all anticipated, to be in poor condition. We identified $5 million of direct cost of deferred maintenance within the first five years and an estimated $8.2 million of deferred maintenance over a ten-year process if nothing were to be done. We found that based upon our current investment, that our facilities were predicted to degrade with several of our facilities declining to critical condition if something was not changed and changed soon. There's a lot of information on this slide and I'll be glad to share it again with everyone. But as we can see here, looking out to a five-year facility condition index, the rankings basically mostly in the poor to critical, trending to divest in the ten-year facilities condition. The Civic Center was very demonstrative in this process and ultimately led to the difficult decision to close that operation. As you can see, we were already at a pure divest recommendation right out of the gate. So moving from the physical space and the conditions of the assets, we moved into phase two, the next informative part of this study. This is space needs and programming. And we completed this portion of the project in December of 2019. This phase looks more upon determining how we use the space. What are our workplace challenges? What are our existing challenges? And what would we like to see from our facilities currently in the next ten years? This was an effort in employee engagement and outreach, starting with leadership visioning sessions and initial goal setting. We had a steering committee developed with all city departments, all had a representative that guided us through each step of this process. A bottom-up approach with workplace surveys. I believe we had 130 staff responses to a very informative workplace survey. We did focus groups where we did a diverse group of different groups from different departments where we came into room and we tried to find the common themes amongst the fire department and public work staff and community development teams to find out across the organization where were our main areas that we needed to highlight and improve upon. And I think, I think a lot of people actually found that therapeutic is the word I heard from some employees. So it was actually an enjoyable experience. And then focusing from the bottom up to the top down, we held strategic meetings with the executive department and each department head to talk about their key needs and their visionings and how they wanted each of their departments to be moving ahead in the future and immediately. So the takeaway from the space needs Um, so the takeaway from the space needs and programming was identifying the, the key findings, um, for what our operational needs and what we wanted our facilities to be and what we found, um, some key themes, transparency, community, well-being, identity, and collaboration. And then moving on to key findings we used to inform our strategies, um, distraction and unclear protocols, um, current facilities hinder good collaborative efforts, unsafe and unenjoyable working conditions directly impact employee morale, which in these days with employee retention is, is huge. Um, a clear lack of delineation between public and private space, as I discussed a bit in my lobby presentation a few minutes ago, and then poorly maintained storage causing a crowded work environment. So, phase three, um, which was completed in July of two thousand twenty, we basically used the, the data-driven metrics for facilities condition index, um, from the first phase, and we took that in, in conjunction with the, um, key findings and strategic opportunities from the space and programming needs to, um, basically come up with, um, several scenarios. So we worked again with our steering committee to, um, to, to basically put things in order and determine our highest priorities, um, and then assign cost estimate, estimates and budgeting to end up ultimately with a final master plan recommendation. Which as we can see here, this is the, this was the final timeline, um, from the Canon Design Report that we use to directly inform the, um, capital improvement plan budget that, that we've all seen and looked through. Um, broken out into project groups, um, we had the fire station two and fire station three, um, spread between the first few years, um, that we've had discussions about the fire station headquarters, which we've decided to leave here onsite for now. Um, our city building, um, that is the city building interim reconfiguration design, which is a lobby project I just spoke with you about. Um, also looking ahead, um, to years eight, nine, and ten, while we don't project our capital improvement plan out that far, um, we do have built-in major reconstructive efforts, um, for expansion of this facility. On the public works site, um, work has commenced and is near substantial completion, actually by the end of September, early October, for the, um, citywide storage facility, which will house, um, public works equipment, um, police department storage, and then fire department storage, which is well needed to keep our equipment out of the elements and prolong, prolong life. Um, we are hoping yet this fiscal year to begin, um, engagement with architecture and design for additional work at, at, um, public works, which involves, um, reconfiguring the existing storage facility, which is Glover Street, seven, we call it seven oh four Glover, north of the existing facility. When we're able to vacate that with our new storage facility, we'll be repurposing and reconditioning that to, um, a new fleet facility. Right now, we have three, three full-time mechanics literally working on top of each other in one tiny, small space. So when we're dealing with heavy, heavy snow equipment and large fire apparatus, it's, it's highly inefficient and we're, we're very anxious and eager to start that design process as well too. Um, we're looking to relocate, relocate our Arbor and Landscape staff from the Landscape Recycling Center, um, back onsite to Public Works. Um, the existing facility out there is horribly dilapidated and does, does not have separate, um, locker room facilities. Um, so we're, we're anxious to come up with a good plan to, to bring them back onsite and just do a limited rehabilitation project out there to accommodate the four Landscape Recycling Center employees. Um, then here at the bottom, we've got allocations built in for additional ADA and life safety improvements. We did a standalone study on that, so we have a list of projects, mostly that, um, that'll be, take place here in the building for expansion of our fire safety protection system. Um, we're just looking to, um, complete the lobby renovations first for the majority of that work, so we don't have conflicting, conflicting work. Um, and then we added in the security, additional security improvements and, um, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar, um, annual re- general rehabilitation line to accommodate immediate needs that fall outside the scope of these planned projects. That includes, um, for example, a, a domestic water heater here, we've got some aging rooftop units that need to be replaced. It gives us the flexibility to be proactive in those, in those replacements. So, a few things I want to think of before we move into, um, before we move into our discussions on the fire stations, is that, is that we, we keep in mind as we talk about what's a very extensive, um, program in and of itself, that we're mindful of the, of the long-term facilities master plan and that we do have projects queued up and lined up still underway. So as we talk about, um, amplifying the scope of these projects, um, be mindful that, that we, we don't want that to inhibit the rest of the plan. Because like I said, we, we, we still have mechanics working on top of each other. We have city staff working in what should really be closets, um, and tiny office spaces, and we, we do have other needs. Um, the, the plan was created and the budget, or the, the allocations for these were, um, created in two thousand nineteen and pre-COVID, um, we were really looking through everything through the lens of, um, a structural budget deficit. So we were very mindful in creating a plan that was financially feasible. And, and as we move forward now to our current budget situation, we may have some more flexibility with funding and grants and different opportunities. Just be mindful and strategic of how the decisions made with these projects affect the other projects down the road. And then from a facilities standpoint, um, take into consideration total cost of ownership because when, when the stations are built and new facilities are built and the ribbons are cut and we've moved on to the next project, we're responsible for maintaining these in perpetuity. And larger facilities mean larger utility costs. Larger facilities mean increased maintenance responsibilities, increased janitorial costs. Um, larger sites mean more landscaping maintenance. So let's just be mindful and keep those in, in our considerations as we make these decisions moving forward. So, I just grabbed a photo here, just, you know, eat a whale one bite at a time from one of my favorite Chels Silverstein poems. Um, it's a long process and I'm pleased where we're at, where we're at today. Um, a lot of people have put a lot of hard work to, to keep things, um, under a lot of challenges the past couple of years to be even here talking about these construction efforts. So, are there any initial questions real quick on the facilities master plan? There's a lot of ground to cover in a short period of time.
Grace.
I was trying to find the facilities master plan online. Do you have suggestions? Is it available somewhere?
It, it should be, it should be on the public website. Um, I don't know the exact link to it, but the, but the facilities master plan was, was on there. I can look it up.
It might be with the site upgrades because I'm on the, I'm on the page, but I don't see it.
The full, the full plan was, was posted on there at one point, but I'll have to check.
Okay.
It should also, it's on the CIP page under additional documents, it should be there. Also, if that link's not working, under the asset summary doc on the facility page, there should also be a link there. So, there should be a couple of links. I did notice with the website, a couple of links have been broken recently, so, um, I can take a look at that.
Thank you. You got me there better than Google did. Um, I was, another quick question was looking at that plan timeline, um, it looks like there's a different timeline for design and land acquisition and construction for stations two and three, but it sounded like from last week and maybe what you'll share this week, that it's kind of a package design deal? If you could clarify that.
No, the, the, the master plan was informative to the capital improvement plan. So basically, it, it, it set the sequence of events that we then were able to, now that we're here, it, it's a guide, it's a guidebook. It's not exactly year for year. We, we've had to build in some flexibilities for timings and for, for land acquisitions. So, to, to say that, that we're going to be able to follow in each year exactly as this graphic represents, um, it's, it's mainly meant to be informative as we adjust our budgets and our, and our plannings and our timing that property becomes available.
Great. And you'll probably answer this later, so you can just, uh, say it's in your presentation later. Um, but sounds like, so we are kind of planning on designing them together or at the same time, the two stations? And I'm also wondering about the land acquisition for three, but I imagine you might get into that, so feel free to.
We can, we can move into that next.
Thank you.
Chandra.
Um, thank you. This is great. So are we in year one? Is this? Like, I, I mean.
If, if we.
Um, Vince, do you just want to go to my slide?
I'll go ahead, let's, let's do that. Um, I'm going to go ahead and I'll move on to, as I'll answer your question directly, how we took the graphical information from the plan and actually have incorporated it into the budget, which is the capital improvement plan. And I'll, I'll hand it over to Will to, to take the lead on that.
Yeah, quick, just a little history. So, once the facility assessment, um, came out, the final report in two thousand twenty, we immediately incorporated that into our CIP, uh, getting started on the storage building and kind of as the linchpin that a lot of other projects needed. The next year in the CIP, we started, um, you know, a lot of the design work, we engaged architects for the lobby for the architect, and then this year, uh, we're continuing those projects and starting construction. So kind of getting into how do we get from a ten-year plan to more or less a three-year plan? There's a couple of factors that kind of drove our, you know, working through it, um, why we kind of got to where we are now. So the first one is just the urgent need of a lot of these facilities. You know, there's, there's a cost to maintenance and especially as they deteriorate, you know, the more and more events and as people have to fix things just to have it rebuilt, you know, two years later. So, um, there was really desire to just kind of accelerate that a little bit, um, especially when it comes to the public works projects that were really spaced out. Um, if you're rearranging people, moving people around, um, just to minimize the staff impact to kind of make more sense to push those in tighter succession. Um, there's also the combination, uh, you know, when you combine some projects with the timing or the design, especially with the fire stations, um, there is a little bit of cost savings there as well that we wanted to capture. And then, um, just kind of when you kind of get a couple of projects together, um, when it comes, you know, realizing that we were probably going to need to borrow for this, once you kind of start going out and issuing debt, it just, from a financial and a staff perspective, it makes more sense to do it all at once and kind of issue one round of debt as opposed to multiple smaller, smaller rounds of debt. So that's kind of the logic that took that ten-year timeframe into three years there.
If I could just add a note to that, which is, that, you know, we always talk about these things as they're kind of organic, right? So, as we move through this process of scoping, we may find that we need to toggle a little bit differently on the financing side. So, I, what I, what I imagine we'll do is we'll get feedback from you all about what you're, what, what you'd like to see in terms of scope, and then we'll have to come and say, okay, here's the implications on the, on the, on the CIP and the funding side, and then we might toggle back a few times. So, that's, you know, this is, none of it is set in stone until we're ready to move out, we have a budget that we think we can implement. We're still in the scoping phase on the fire stations. What, what you saw, um, from Canon Design was them sort of taking a ten-year look, and this is how they mapped it out. And then as Vincent, Will said, then we took that with our lens of financing it all and putting it in the CIP and, and adjusted it, and, and we may need to adjust it again. Now, you know, as we work through the scope process. So, just, there's, there's a certain amount of constraint, which is what can we afford across all of the projects? But there's also ways to adjust that in terms of timing, whether we build both fire stations at the same time or not. There are benefits to doing that, but there's also challenges on the financing side. So, it's just, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll have to toggle back and forth a few times.
Any other questions on the general facilities plan?
I would just wrap this part up by saying thank you again to Vince and Will and Carol for their leadership over the past few years in, in bringing this aspect along. The reason we chose Canon Design, at least in my mind, one of the big factors was the fact that not only did this firm consider brick and mortar and facilities, but they also focused as much on people, the people working in the facilities, the people, the public utilizing the facilities, and that made a big difference as well in what, what the recommendations were. It was the interaction of the, the, the structures with the people that were using them. And it's, it's been a fascinating process and it's just wonderful to start to see the, um, the results of all that. So thank you all. So I think we'll move into fire stations.
Great. So I'll, I'm going to introduce Jason, Jason Estes with, um, FGM Architecture Firm, and he's, he's going to start off, um, by working through, um, a detailed examination of what, what was meant by essential, enhanced, and amplified, and some of the key, key design elements that we'll go into, kind of start off our discussion. Um, they've got an extensive, hundreds, is it safe to say hundreds of fire stations under?
Over six hundred.
Over six hundred. Um, so we definitely have a subject matter expert with us today, so I'll hand it over to Jason.
Just checking volume. Okay. Hard to hear yourself. Uh, so thank you for having us. Uh, obviously, uh, we've been excited since we've been on the team to be able to help the city, uh, in this process. Um, as, as Vince stated, uh, our expertise specifically is in public safety. Uh, that covers everything from police, nine-one-one centers, I consider public works, essential facilities as well, and then fire stations. As Vince stated, uh, we have over six hundred fire projects, fire service projects, and we are very active, not only in the facilities, but as the mayor stated, we are very active in making sure that we deal and address the occupants, the firefighters themselves, that on how they're dealing with what they do on a daily basis, as well as how we can enhance what they do and, and, and make it more effective for their communities that they're serving. We started this entire process coming, uh, coming on, and really, our biggest thing that we want to be able to talk about is how your city actually operates. Many departments all do the same thing, but they all do it differently. Um, and what we need to be able to understand is how your department operates. So, one of the very first things that we did, knowing that program is hard, most people that are firefighters are typically a firefighter for career within a certain department, and they don't know anything different. And when we're trying, getting feedback, um, when we're trying to, uh, understand operations, we want to be able to open their eyes. They, we want them to understand the current conditions that need to be addressed, uh, and are being addressed within their service. So we started initially with tours, tours of stations. Uh, thing, uh, stations that were approximately similar in size, uh, stations that had similar functions. We wanted them to see multiple varieties of how it was done, and not only that, but allow them the opportunity to talk to the occupants and the other firefighter staff of where we took them. Uh, you know, the brass was able to talk one-on-one to the side, I was not in the middle. They, believe me, if you get a bunch of firefighters together, they'll talk as they go through. Uh, but allow them to actually talk and understand how it operates, right? How did you like this? How do you like this? Did this work? I, I think it was very informative because it, we came back from that energized. There was a lot of excitement on the idea of, wow, I didn't even know that that was a concern that I needed to be addressed or that I needed to be aware of. Following that, we then set up what we would consider interviews. Uh, we brought staff in over, I think it was two or three days, um, and we, we set it up not only with the brass of the fire department, but with the actual crews. We wanted to understand each operation, everything from special operations, uh, to lieutenants, captains, uh, down to the, down to every shift. We actually spoke with every shift through the fire department. This was done multiple reasons. One, we wanted to make sure that we understood how they operated, but we also wanted to make sure that they had the opportunity to be involved within the process. That is a key piece. I can't tell you how many times that we've been brought into different departments on projects like this, and the firefighters are very. and the firefighters are very obstinate and do not like the station, and it's mainly because it was the chief's design, it was the city's design. Nobody has that full backing and making sure that they, they are the biggest proponents of that project. And we feel that doing that, that time spent is very useful, uh, and I believe it, similarly, it was very effective. From those, from those interviews, we were asking not only how they operated, but then we were able to tour their current stations. Uh, and if we could not tour their stations, I'm sure we can pull up pictures. Uh, in fact, there was a nice article in the news. Ah, we can do that. All right. Test? Okay. So we were able to tour their existing stations. Uh, that gave us another insight. We were able to see how they were actually able to operate on calls, um, fly on the wall type of thing. Let's see how they go during call volumes, uh, call, callouts. It allows us to see how they, how they, how they integrate. Is it me? See the deficiencies that Vince was talking about, not only in the building, because we were able to ask, not only were we dealing with firefighters, but we were dealing with PW staff, facilities. We were able to see those items that have been addressed through this process that Vince talked about, so that we understand how they've been dealing with this. You know, having to have coats on in the winter still because there's no insulation in those outside walls and there's cracks, uh, in, in Station Three. It, it, it is one of those things that it is a unique building because not only do they occupy or they, they work out of there, but they then occupy. It's a third of their life. Uh, and that is a key piece when we talk about the quality of life for the individuals, uh, for the firefighters and the staff, is that it is a third of their life. They are actually living and working there. And if they're not, if they are unable to, and, and I don't want to say decompress, because there is a piece there, but if they're unable to, to rest, if they're unable to decompress, if they're unable to be safe at work, it will affect their quality of services as they go out. If you, if, you know, most people are used to sleeping eight hours a night, they have multiple calls. They're lucky if they get a couple hours as they go through, but yet this is the person that is getting, being called out for a heart attack that needs to be on point. Every call, it's a race in heart pressure, heart, uh, in, in, in heart rates. There's definitely a lot of stress that puts in there, so that's why we're thinking about the individuals as we go through this. What we wanted to look at was looking at finances and looking at how we can do these projects. As Vince and Carol stated and Will stated, they were looking at not only the needs, but how can it be phased in? So we start with what is the program that is a necessity? We want to look at what is that long-term goal? When we're looking at a building and a program, we don't want to make it 10 years. That is a small commitment when it comes to a building. Typically, when we talk about fire stations or public safety in general, we're looking at 75 to 100 years is what we want. And that's hard to do because there is a lot of, there is a lot of change. Just in the past 30 years within the fire service, there's so much change when it comes to what they do. They never, they never needed offices. It was just, you know, pounding ground and go to the fire, do their thing. The amount required for training, the amount of online computer training that is required, practical training, has, I don't even know, I quadrupled, probably be wrong. It's still not enough in the process. The reports and the paperwork when it comes to, uh, you know, responsibility and liability that they need to attend to. And their needs of what they are addressing has changed. Their equipment has changed. You know, it's probably four times the size it used to be in the process. So all of these need to be factored in, and then there are new things that are coming into factor. We, we rely a lot when it comes to this to NFPA guidelines. Uh, they're not codes, but it's hard to say that, well, I didn't do that because it was a guideline. Well, that's usually the first thing the attorneys are gonna point to if there's an issue. Why didn't you do this? Uh, so when it comes to NFPA guidelines, the biggest item is dealing with cancer, uh, within the fire service. It is a huge piece. It's always been neglected in the past because people would retire, they'd go down to Florida, and then you get cancer, and what you, would you say when you, when you get cancer, what do you do? Well, I'm retired. They never put firefighter. There was no national database. So now they started putting all that together, and it's, and it's basically become a hot topic to be able to make sure that it's addressed first and foremost. Uh, within these facilities, we really try to separate and keep isolated areas of hot, you know, what we call a hot zone or, or high contaminants. We keep that separate from where they occupy, where they live. We want to make sure that we give them the opportunity to clean up and, and rinse and keep everything clean within that area. Other pieces have to do with safety. Um, old stations, the current ones that you have, there's not a lot of room. Uh, they're basically, if you, I don't know if you can actually open the actual doors on the fire trucks without hitting the stuff on the side, and if you need something, you probably have to move probably three things to go get it, um, which is inefficient. It's unsafe, especially when they're, when you're waking up in the middle of the night. Your job is to get out of that station as fast as possible to meet NFPA guidelines, and you're running and you're running into stuff, you're slipping, things of that sort. So safety is also of the occupants that we're trying to address. So, once we figured out what the actual needs were, and we talked through the staff and we put it against our databases, we put it against our history and our expertise on what necessity would be for this, for these satellite stations. We looked at that and we said, what is the ultimate answer? Once we kind of came up with that program, we then met as a team, both PW, the fire department, and administration, and we said, let's whittle this down. That's the wish list. What can we whittle this down to? What, what functions and options can we not, or do with, not do without? Which is what we said the essential facility is. This is the minimum requirement to be able to make sure that they can do their job for the city. Is it the full 75 years? No, because you'll see that it is still only set up for four, uh, for firefighters. There's ability to add on. That was the idea, maybe in the future, but that essentially allows you to do your operation now. So in those program spaces, and I'll kind of walk through a little bit. Do we, can we pull, is there? Forgot where it is. There it is. View. Man, my eyes are going bad. My eye doctor finally talked me into getting progressives, and they're coming, so.
Excuse me, I just had a, a point of clarification. So, um, Tim and Demond gave us a presentation, a short kind of preview. And under essential, it says new 75-year facility. And you just said, it's not a 75-year facility. I was just wondering if you could clarify the difference between those two.
So the building itself will be 75 years.
Okay.
In terms of operation,
Use.
Your operation will change and it will grow within that time period. So you will be short actual space and equipments in that time period. You're set up for four bunks in the essential. Ideally, within 75 years, you really should be at six, six bunks. Uh, the bays are set up at a minimum of two. When it comes to operation, if you're adding those two additional people, you'd have an additional vehicle in that time period. So there is a short, shortness within that. The facility itself would be 75 years. Your operations, now again, crystal ball.
The physical building should last 75 years.
Correct. The crystal ball will be something.
Function of it is, okay, got it. Thank you.
So the biggest item, when you look at any of the program that everybody gets used to, is the, is the apparatus. They're used to firefighters. That's where you go right away to the trucks. And that's probably the biggest change when you're looking at these sizes. And what I want to be able to state, uh, going into this, the program that is in these, whether it be essential, enhanced, or amplified, are larger than what was put into the, uh, the, the master plan. The master plan was a guess. They don't do fire stations. They didn't, they may have asked the questions to the firefighters, but they didn't understand exactly what they're doing when they talk about those operations. Not a fault of them. They had best, best intentions, and it's still for a planning tool. Uh, but looking at how you guys operate, we wanted to make sure that everything was addressed. Uh, so in here, if you look at, uh, the two, you have the apparatus area, and underneath there, one through 13, are the different spaces of the apparatus. Uh, apparatus bays, those are obviously where the vehicles are stored. Um, but your current bays that you have now has all of the other functions down below in the bays. So literally along the walls, hidden be, behind each other, move this to get around that. Those are those spaces that you're, that you're going through. This is meant that everything has its own proper place. That's what the intent is here, uh, so that we're looking at safety. All of these spaces would be something that would be isolated from the living area. So typically, if we have the opportunity where we're not adding on a bay in the future, we would look to put those dirty spaces, things like turnout gear, where they have their, their coats and, and boots and their pants, um, the laundry, the heavy-duty laundry that's used to clean that, hose storage, uh, decon, which has to do with actually cleaning of the equipments. All of that stuff, the hose tower, all of that wants to be as far away from the living area as possible. These spaces that we're looking at are all functional spaces. Hose tower, we need to be able to dry stuff. We need to be able to dry the equipment, but there's another, a secondary function. As we stated, training is huge. We're letting, we're looking at an opportunity to use this for training, right? Are there options that they can do while on shift, not having to go out of shift as a callback, go somewhere else for training, cost additional labor, if they can, you know, additional costs to keep them on shift longer? Or can they do something, training onsite for an hour, a half hour between calls? The more that we can let them train, like any profession, the more qualified and the more ready they are. Um, but it's a functional space, and in the enhanced or the, the essential facility, this is what we would consider a minimal size to be able to house the equipment that we're talking about. Turnout gear lockers, this is giving everything a place, not on the bay floor, something that is not sucking fumes right next to the exhaust of a vehicle. Um, that way, when you clean the, clean the gear, it's in a negative pressure space. It's constantly flowing air, making sure that it's not, uh, flowing back into the station. It's exhausting out. It's helping to dry the gear. Bay laundry, this is the heavy-duty washer extractor. This is the, the washer dryer, slop slink, skeleton dryer. Basically, almost like a skeleton system that you hang the coats on to dry. Um, this is really kind of that dirty, what makes the dirty space not so dirty. This is part, this is an essential piece when it comes to NFPA. Not every station has these. Uh, in fact, I've been through many departments that don't have these, but NFPA basically states that you should have one of these in every station. Decon EMS, this is the, again, another ability to clean stuff. When you come back, you have your masks. You have your, 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 your actual breathing apparatus. You have other pieces of gear that you just need to get in there and scrub, get the soot and, and equip, and equipment cleaned. Uh, this is the ability to clean it, but also hang it and dry it. EMS supply, vending, they need supplies. Uh, they utilize a vending, uh, option potentially, or in the future, or, or just a small closet. We're not sure. We wanted to make sure for the future, if they go to a vending machine for EMS, they have the ability to keep that there. Uh, it's a, it's a unique piece. When they go on calls, they're able to actually take, uh, take a piece out, just like you're getting a soda out of a machine. It, it tells somebody that they need to now restock it. Uh, but if they don't use that in the current, as we're saying now, they at least have a closet that can keep that equipment under lock and key, protected, not soaking up the fumes from the bays. Uh, SCBA, so this is a minimum area that would be able to allow for breathing apparatus. So SCBA is like scuba, but without underwater, so self-contained breathing apparatus. Uh, so with that, it's the ability to fill the bottles that are on their back. These stations, no matter which option we're talking about, has, has the ability to fill them. They're able to keep them on the rigs in the process. All of their maintenance is done at Station Four, so there is no maintenance done at these stations. It's already factored into the overall department. So that's why this is a minimum aspect, to be able to make sure that they can accommodate that. Uh, workroom tools, equipment. They gotta maintain stuff. Part of their job when they come on shift is to make sure that they go through every, every bin, make sure every tool's in the right place, every tool's working, and if it's not, they're ripping it apart and making sure that it works. Um, so, you know, maintenance, uh, jack of all trades, I tell you, as they go through. That's why a lot of times they fix their own stuff and it's, you never hear from them in the process. A bay toilet. When you come back from a call and you got your gear on, you don't want them to come into that residential area with their gear on. Again, trying to keep that transition between hot zone and cold zone, uh, going through. Hose storage, training storage. When they're talking about these training apparatus, something, a place that, I don't know what the training is, they're really good at making devices, it will, it will, it will travel from station to station. Maybe today is a board of, of fire alarm systems, maybe it's a, a fire sprinkler setup, maybe it's more of an actual breach door. But having a space that they can have these props and utilize training in a half hour, an hour, and not have to move a vehicle out because it's the middle of winter and now I can't train, having a place is important and imperative. General base storage. If anybody's been in any facility, the one thing that's always missing, and Vince will tell you, is storage. No matter what you plan for, storage was always a necessity. That's what this is for. Seasonal storage, this has to do with mowers. If we have a larger parcel, like the one we're talking about at Station Two, we need to be able to maintain the parcel, uh, the, the site. Uh, snow blower, salt, uh, weed whacker, shovels, basic tools that have to do with that outside space. This apparatus by itself, when you look at the square footage on this, is majority of what your stations is now, but in a much more appropriately sized space. The piece that's a little different when you, or, or we'll go to the residential. So in this, we'll stay with the essential operations. Residential is what we call kind of that private side. This is the side where really not a lot of public's going into, but it's a necessity as the firefighters, since they're there 24/7. Uh, well, 24, not seven, but 24 hours on shift. So this has to do with the day function. So day room, dining, kitchen. And most people, that it's not a normal municipal operation, but it is a necessity. They cook three times a day. Most average people, if you got kids, you might be cooking dinner twice a week, three times a week, because you're running around to practices and this and that. You're not home for lunch, so you're not cooking lunch. Most people don't cook breakfast that much, maybe on the weekends. So your kitchens at home probably are used, I'll call, max five, six times a week on average, hopefully some more than others. This is a facility that is used three times a day all week. That means that the wear and tear on these functions definitely need to be at a higher level. They need to be able to hold up and be, and, and serve the people that are in here, right? They have to eat. They need to be energized. They need to do their job. The day room is a place where, you know, yes, everybody sees the lazy boys or couches and all that, but really what it's about is, it, it's about camaraderie, it's about decompression, it's about a chance to train, because they will throw videos up on the screen constantly during sessions. It's an ability to, to rest in between calls. If you're on a call and you can catch 30 minutes in between without going to bed because you didn't get any sleep last night because of calls, that is something that would occur. So the operation of the day function is a critical component. The, the bunk rooms, these are their, this, these are the ability to sleep. And the change from most that have done is these are looking at more individual rooms. When you talk about gender, when you talk about, um, sleep depravity or, or things of that sort, that, that weigh on a firefighter, you need to be able to make sure that they are safe. that weigh on a firefighter, you need to be able to make sure that they are safe. So individual rooms with doors, the ability to shut down lights if I want to sleep and the person next to me is still training on something, it's not disrupting. Female, male, you're sleeping in your undergarments, you can at least change and not have to be subject to that in the process. It is a piece that, it's a key, it is a piece that we want to make sure is comfortable, but what you'll see is, to be able to future-proof this for that seventy-five-hundred years that we're talking about, you'll see that we went with a universal locker room. So you go get your stuff. It doesn't have to be in the room, anybody takes their stuff, you go to your room, you change. You go, take your stuff, you go to the bathroom, you change. It's a private bathroom when you get to the toilet rooms. It's like your house. There's a toilet, a shower, and a sink. So no matter what your gender diversity is within the fire department, I've seen some departments get as high as fifty-five percent right now female, and I have others that have just gotten their first female. This future-proofs so that you don't overbuild one gender versus the other. It keeps it very flexible for the future. Fitness room, this is a minimal requirement for pieces of apparatus. Currently, they have apparatus literally sitting in the hall outside the bunk room. So if somebody's sleeping, you're not using the apparatus, you're not using the fitness equipment. And to be, to maintain fitness is a key component of what you're trying to do with these individuals. You want them to be able to get their aerobics, not aerobics.
Cardio.
Cardio, there we go. My word of work eventually. Cardio as they go through. It's not all just weight training, it's about that cardio aspect as well. And after that, we want to be able to give them the places that they can maintain. As Vince stated, all these facilities come with more maintenance, but we're looking at materials that are going to try to minimize that. So giving them the proper ability to maintain not only the building, but also their equipment. Residential laundry, so I don't have to go put my sheets in the laundry out on the bay floor with all the other stuff that shouldn't be there. That's what the residential is, and this is an essential side, what you'll see is, the bunk room is only set up for four. What you'll see the difference is, in the enhanced, it will have six. And that's, and we size the day room and the dining for four to six, because really it's about the same size. And if you're going to ever add on to this in the future, it's kind of like your house, it's hard to add twenty feet onto your kitchen, or twenty feet onto your dining room. After a certain point, twenty square feet, sorry. Twenty feet is a lot, but twenty square feet onto your kitchen or your dining room. So those spaces are sized appropriately for this, we really just downsize the bunk room and the bays. The other piece that's a lot different between the three has to do with the public space. In here, what we looked at was, what is, what wants to be here in these facilities? There's, the need for a training room is important. Currently, if they have an on-shift meeting, it's at the dining room table. You gotta move stuff out of the way, hopefully it's not lunchtime or breakfast time as they go through. Giving them a place where, no different than a business, that you have an office, everything has a place, that they can do professional business is critical. But also, it gives them an extra space that they can go train. Many of the sessions that they're able to do online, or any collaboration between different side projects as they go in shift, this gives them that place to go. It's set up for full shift, mainly because there isn't a place other than at Station Four for them to use now. Upstairs is shared quite a bit, so the availability isn't always there. Station Four is actually used by the campus, so they're subject to whatever the scheduling is as well. This would give them a place that they could use on a regular basis and probably would use on a regular basis. We also looked at a need across the city. Is there a need to have a city office here, an extra office? There seems to be short, a shortness of city offices or function, and this came, probably, I think, came to light a lot during COVID, just where do you put a lot of people when you gotta spread them out? Having some additional spaces around the city at different depart, or at different facilities would give you some flexibility, or some opportunity as staff grows. This would also give them flexibility in this station in the future, that if that needed to convert over to a different operation within the fire department, where maybe there was another officer. What we did include here is also a firefighter wellness room and mothers' room. So a mothers' room specifically is a requirement by the state of Illinois, and it's definitely one of those things that every facility should have, and we've been focusing on that for a long time before it was law. You know, putting them in a, having a mother go into a bathroom is degrading in the process. They should have a facility that's appropriate. But this is also meant to pull double duty. Wellness room is a key piece. When they come back from a call, we've been doing things in terms of light, sound, smell, all of your senses within these spaces to help decompress, or amp up, depending upon where you're at, serotonin, or, why is my brain not working?
Adrenaline.
Kind of adrenaline. We've actually partnered with Dr. Joel Robertson, and we've done a lot on presentations, specifically on the mental aspect of the firefighter and the public safety individual, on what these calls do for their brain. On average, these calls will reduce their lives by seven years. That's a fact, and that is proven across. So giving them that space where, on a bad call, that they can come in, decompress, or amp up, or just calm down before going home after a shift. You know, or I'm about to get on a shift and now I need to get myself right. So having this space does pull double duty. It is a critical piece in what we are doing within the fire service, and what you will see is that exists in all of the programs. After that, a lot of the function has to do with operational, or functional operations of the facility. What you'll see at the bottom on the second page here really comes into the overall size. What you'll see for the essential is that we're at about eight thousand eighty-seven, eight thousand and eighty-seven square feet, and that's gross, square feet. Traditionally, when I've, when we actually make this into a station, I can beat that. It's not a bragging point, but we can definitely come under that. That is the piece where, if we can get under there by fifty, hundred, hundred-and-fifty square feet, we just don't know how the pieces go together yet. We don't know how they fit on the site. But we want to make sure that we at least have the opportunity to do it correctly if the site says we have to do it differently. This program takes into consideration that, and what you've realized is, your other, your existing stations are at, I forget where you're existing, or do I have it there? Yeah. Your existing stations, right there on the left side, are only forty-three-hundred square feet, forty-three-seventy-five, and forty-one-thirty-five. So one station, and this is all for one station, is almost the size of both your stations put together right now. When it comes to the, ooh, that goes into the budget. When we go into the enhanced, what we did on this one is, we increased the size of the training room. And what we did there is, we looked to make this more of a community room. As stated, we wanted to bring options to the council. Is there a need from the city to include a community room within either of these locations? Give back or give opportunity to the public to utilize these facilities, or for events for the city? This would allow that opportunity at this size to consider that. We went from four in the bunk rooms to six. Inside the apparatus bay, we, and the support, we added a quarter master storage. That's a space that basically is, where do you put all your extra gloves, hoodies, shirts, boots, extra turnout coats? They all need a place to go that at least is secure and safe. When you go to the enhanced, or amplified version, this takes the community room a little larger. The enhanced version puts you at about twenty-five people, this community room brings you to about fifty people. Again, giving you the option on how do you envision this function, or this station to operate for the city. We added additional office, city offices, with the idea that, was there a need? Underneath the administration, we added an additional office for the fire department directly, and we also included a small conference room. Is this a necessity? On day one, it isn't, but in operations within seventy-five years, it might be as your station, as your station operations grow. Apparatus bay, we included a third bay. Does this have the third bay? No, this has the.
It was intended.
Yes, it was intended, I have something wrong on here, I apologize. This was supposed to have the third bay on the apparatus bay. We then took another swing at the possibility with the amplified, with the idea that rather, and I don't see it here, rather than having three bays in the future, do you look at keeping only two bays and having an outbuilding for any additional support function in terms of equipment? That's a cheaper function to do, and the only reason I say that is, a fire station is considered an essential facility, therefore it must be built to a higher level standard. So typically, it needs to be twenty percent greater structurally than anything else, so when things fall apart, it could still standing. In fact, by code, we are actually building in a storm shelter into each of these facilities that allow them to withstand an EF5 tornado, so that way the occupants are safe, and then when they're done, they can go, get back and serve their city. So the amplified option would be, rather than building it to that higher level, that it could be an outbuilding, something a little less durable in terms of that heavy structural need, but still functional. The biggest difference on all of these has to do with, I mean, probably the biggest shock value that you see is the size difference from where you're at, and what was within the master plan. As stated, I think the biggest piece that you'll see is, that really that apparatus area is the largest impact. I don't think that's something that was considered initially, but all of the functions have a place, all of the functions have a need, and they will all work for this operation. The other piece, so in the here, and I'll go back, I apologize to the budget sides. When you see the budgets that we initially put together here, ugh, I'm gonna have to turn this, ain't I? I'm blind today. Zoom, rotate counterclockwise, there we go. So when you're looking at these budgets, we anticipate these budgets under a certain level of construction. We've not developed what the outside of this looks like. We've done some visioning sessions with the team, we have an idea of what it may look like, and we will present that to the council when we move forward to that point, when and if we move forward to that point. But we know that they want to be efficient, we know that they want to be as maintenance-free as possible, from what Vince is talking about, we want them to be durable and a good life cycle product. These construction costs are taking that into consideration. As stated, it's a twenty-four-hour operation, we want to make sure that everything inside is durable. I say fireman-proof, but there's no such thing, prison-grade? No, not quite. It's definitely something that we want to make sure that is very durable. Something that has taken abuse on a regular, you know, use on a regular basis can be abused over that shorter period. This has taken into consideration the current market when we're looking at this. So those numbers are representative. Because of our fire service expertise, we are getting bids on a regular basis. So we've evaluated where the bids have been coming in in the past, in the previous three, four months prior to this, and we've evaluated and adjusted for the Urbana area, based upon a general contractor bid. So these are representative of those. And we want to make sure that we're taking into consideration total project, and what you'll see on that is very important. Total project, you never want to get done and you're not able to actually put beds and furniture and stuff inside that station. You know, you want to be able to approve a number, dependent upon whatever solution the council makes, you want to make sure that you're confident in that number. So each of these budgets have those addressed in here, and you'll see certain pieces that are kind of an unknown, at least at this point. We've put a number within the 1.2 for the existing building demolition. Does that need to happen on a current site, wherever the site occurs? Maybe, maybe not. Unsatisfactory soils, once the sites have been selected, we'll know more about that underground material and what needs to be addressed. We're aware of where the current site is proposed for Station Two, Station Three is in process, but once that's factored in, the intent is that the current stations would continue to serve operations while the new stations are being built. So no loss of service. That does limit you though, if you reuse Stations, the Station Three site, only because you can only fit so much left on that given parcel, and it may limit how you operate and still be able to keep that station operational. But the budgets are there to be able to anticipate what those impacts are. In those costs, we've also taken into consideration sustainability. We know it is a huge piece within the city and within your guidelines, that you want to be able to make sure that we're looking to the future. So the amplified version would have probably a lot of sustainability. Minimally, the codes have something very efficient on any of these. You're looking at ninety-nine percent effective, or efficient mechanical systems, you're looking at higher insulation envelopes, you have no insulation on the current station. So all of that has been taken into consideration, but also future-proofing. So the ability to have the roof structures weighted or sized to anticipate the future addition of solar panels. If they're not put in on day one, ten years down the line, when it is become more cost-effective, you have the ability to put those on there. That you have space within the electrical room to put said panels when fleet vehicles switch from diesel and gas to electric, that you can fit those additional panels within those spaces without having to do additions. We want to make sure that it's future-proofed for the sustainable changes, even if they're not put in on day one. I don't know if I have. I guess at that point, I'd open it up for any questions, I talk a lot, I apologize.
What questions do we have? James?
Thank you, this has been very helpful. I do appreciate the presentation, I do have, I do have some questions, I have several, so bear with me. I did want to check, I noticed the circulation factors for the different areas are different? So is that a standard factor that you use for fire departments, that if you're talking about administration, you need another quarter of space for a place that has a single office? Is that?
It is one of those space, it is one of those things when it comes to fire, any facility, we want to make sure that we can get to it. So that circulation space.
So doors and hallways and that kind of thing?
Correct, it's a hallway to serve that space. And what you'll see is like spaces like the apparatus bay is set as a at a zero circulation. Because really those openings open directly to the apparatus bay. There is no additional corridor in those situations. But in an office situation or bunk rooms, I still need to be able to get to those spaces. So that's why that additional circulation has been factored in there.
Okay, and then I when you were talking about like the turnout lockers, I think you're talking about protecting them from exhaust. Do these proposals not have the exhaust systems that we've been putting in? To manage exhaust when machine, when apparatus are in the. In the facilities? I I saw some of those when I was on tour. I thought, boy, that's cool. Is that part of this or is that something we have to worry about again with this proposal?
So the currently within the stations, the department is utilizing the a plime event system, which is a name brand direct capture exhaust system. They actually are put onto the exhaust pipe as they back in and as they discharge. That is not a code required system. That is actually following an NFPA guideline. A code system would be an actual exhaust flush system that automatically, if the sensors are high on NO, CO, or CR two, they will flush those bays out.
So so Chief, I don't think we'd want to go backwards on that, would we, right? Okay, cuz cuz I I I heard you talk about a lot of NFPA recommendations that seem to be baked into this. So how do you decide if an NFPA recommendation is baked in or not?
This is already taken into consideration that we would have that also included. So you would actually have the code required and the NFPA requi- uh, requested solution, which would maintain that direct capture exhaust. But it's meant to capture ninety-five percent of the particulates. There is still particulates that come off of the vehicles. That's part of why you're looking at a negative pressure. Plus then in the turnout gear, it's more than just the vehicles. It's actually coming back from a live scene. So any of the smoke from a scene, maybe it was a dumpster fire that doesn't require me to wash the gear. But there's still something within that gear that I want to make sure is maintained properly.
All right, one other thing I noticed with the training. Capacity, there's a twenty person training room in yellow in the essential description. But there's only like ten parking spaces at the facility. And I I wondered if that was a disconnect.
It is not, only because if if this was meant to be a department training function, not a community room. They would be pulling their shift on vehicles. So they would be bringing their engines with. So you'd have multiple people on vehicles coming. They wouldn't be coming in terms of individual cars.
Where would they park those vehicles?
That's part of the site when it comes to the site apparatus and the.
It sounds like more pavement.
Pavement is.
Not necessarily parking.
Pavement is your enemy when it comes to any fire station. There's a lot of pavement when it comes to the weights of these rigs. You want anything to be able to handle the heaviest vehicle you have because they will park it. Because of a change of quarters or something like that that may occur where your neighboring department may have to take over a facility in a Mavis box call. So that pavement is a key, is is it, will be heavy duty pavement. But it would also account for any of the parking individual or parking for the apparatus that would account for that essential training.
Okay, all right, thank you. And one thing that applies to all of them. And and maybe this is Vince or Chief who wants to speak to this. None of these have an emergency generator in there. And so, you know, particularly if one of these is going to be our IT backup. That's my that's my space. We're getting into my space there.
Yeah, we currently don't have generator backup in either facility, but that is a priority.
I I don't see the point of building it to resist an EF five tornado if it doesn't have power after it goes by, yeah.
All of the programs do have it. If you look underneath E seven, so support storage in number seven, it's emergency generator. And it has it on the exterior. So all of these are sized.
So that dash doesn't mean it's missing?
It just means it's not in the building.
It doesn't need square footage?
It doesn't need square footage. Correct.
I apologize for misunderstanding that.
You're looking at my way of doing this.
Okay.
So if there's anything, please, I want to make sure that you understand it. So no, they are meant to be fully backed up, not a partial backup either. There are some where they'll just let the overhead doors open or something on that. We are looking at full backup system for the entire facility.
Yeah, so I'm gonna ask a question, which is partially discussion, I think, for my for my colleagues here. And that is, it looks like the enhanced proposal assumes. The extra two people. It has the extra bunks. But it doesn't have the alternative exterior additional bay in it. And and I I'm gonna suggest that if we're gonna invest in the building to be able to have, you know, six people on shift. That we that we at least have that in the in the items. And then I would say, I I'm gonna say, and people can argue with me about this. For the amplified that we should be talking about a three bay. Because I looked at Champagne and I noticed the last two fire department buildings they built on. North Mattis and out on Windsor Road are are three bay facilities. And I think about this in terms of, you weren't here last week, so you didn't hear me talk about. My concern about, you know, Urbana is growing south and east and getting further and further away. From the core medical services. Our two ambulances are on University and Neil. And I have to assume that when Champagne was thinking about these stations that are far out, that extra pair of people, they're thinking in terms of medical response. I see a nod. Is that is that a fair way to think? So if we're gonna have these three tiers of basic, middle, and amplified. I I I feel like we should have that third bay option in the top option. I mean, it clear, it's clear that we could back that out to a separate outbuilding if we if we got to that point. Because it's a not, it's a possibility. It's shown here. But if we're gonna put the the beds in, it's only a matter of time. The other question I'm gonna ask is. The other thing that's clear that Champagne has done is it has grown out far away from the core services is they've built more stations. Right? So do we need to think about additional bays here? Or do we think about longer term in twenty years or fifteen years or thirty years, whenever that is? Where's the next station go?
I think data.
To cover that.
I think data is pointing towards that it's not too early now to start planning for that. That bit of sprawl that our city is starting to experience.
Yeah, it's pretty clear. I I moved here in nineteen eighty-nine, so that's thirty years ago roughly. And and I know there was no Stone Stone Creek. There was some Myra Ridge, but there was no South Ridge. I mean, we and there was no. All of the development basically east of around Fred Smith Road and east, you know, has come up in that timeframe. So so predicting those things. Some people make a lot of money by predicting how those things go.
Definitely be in a strategic manner. And I think there's another important factor that we haven't really talked about is we have this space being built at Public Works now. That we're calling for just general city storage. Right now, the fire department has all of their specialized emergency response vehicles housed all over the city. We're we're literally begging for space. We're taking up two bays of space in MTD's new driver training facility out off of University. We've got, we've got stuff stored in Public Works buildings, just scattered all over. And even even in this interim fix of this new facility that's under construction currently. Those are still primary response vehicles. It still requires us to assemble at the station, drive to Public Works, transfer our equipment and gear, and then respond. So when we're talking about adding additional space versus twenty years down the road, adding additional fire station. I think all that is part of the larger picture. But in the interim, looking at the amplified, you notice we talked about an outbuilding. At least that would get that equipment on to our fire department property. So we have more of a rapid response in preparing that equipment, so.
I only have one more.
Okay, then we'll move on.
Then we can move on. And and that is kind of backing up to Vince, your previous presentation. You look at that building master plan, you see that there are two options for this space. Right? With regard to the fire station that is here. And and one of those options talks about putting the central number one fire station in a different place in the city building. Taking up some of that space. I don't know where we're at thinking about that and how far out that looks. But I don't know if that plays a part in what kind of decision we want to make longer term.
Yeah, I would say that that based on where we're at now from a planning perspective, those discussions are probably three to five years out. In terms of the major reconstructive effort here at the building. And whether we go with the proposal, which is to to rehabilitate the existing fire station headquarters one here on site. Or to relocate that and re- recapture that space for other purposes. The plan does also provide vision for expanding this space back into the into the green space. But I'm just here for additional council space, for additional citywide training space. And then basically reorganizing most of city, not the front facing government functions, but the but the remainder of city government.
Excuse me, Vince, is your mic on? I hate to ask you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll get I'll get a little closer. It is on.
Okay.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so so essentially, I mean, to keep in mind as we look strategically for large, larger training spaces too. That that's also a function of the reconstruction effort here at the at the city facility. And I like you very wisely noted that the options do include a relocation possible consideration of another fire station downtown.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we could just go down the line if each person has questions or. Okay, go ahead, Grace.
I don't know about down line, but I have something to say as per usual. Some first questions was, overall, what's the next step in this process? Like, I understand tonight's just a discussion. Moving forward, kind of what's the plan for public input and final decision making on these options? Slash, second part of that question is, is it only these three options? Or is there also the flexibility to pick and choose if we wanted the essential plus more parking spaces plus this thing? Or is it these three options?
It's definitely not one of the three. Any feedback of picking and choosing pieces to to making sure that they're different or the same. That's all on the table and we're looking for the council's support or or feedback on that. Because there is a thought, and I think you mentioned this earlier. Is there a value to doing them at the same time? And there is, especially if they're the same building. Because then we're only documenting it once, we're able to bid multiple buildings, you're getting at a cost premium. Especially if they're the same station. But who's to say that the community room is in one location and all the city offices are on the other station? I think that's where, you know, a little feedback on on what input, whether it be for the needs from the city, would be important to have.
So yes, my question is, is that what you're asking us tonight in this discussion? Or will there be a public forums and input process and then come back to council? I guess I'm not sure is like, is tonight the opportunity where you want input from us? Or is there another part of the process, like this is more of a presentation discussion?
Let's try this one. Is this better? Okay. You're right, Jason, you can't you can't hear yourself. So we weren't expecting decisions tonight. We were expecting questions and maybe some commentary to say, you know, like, this is the kind of thing I'm thinking about. That might help shape some of the things we bring back to you. I I think typically, I know, Jason, your firm, one of the reasons why we selected you was because you have done robust community engagement processes. I don't know it's at that it's at the scoping phase typically. Because this is this is kind of really in the in the weeds for the the general public. As opposed to like what the building is presenting to the, you know, visually. So you you might speak traditionally when when you do public engagement. But we're, I think what we had talked about last week when when Tim was here is like, you know, we'll take a month or two to kind of periodically check in and and further the discussion. But we're not, by no means are we expecting decisions tonight.
Generally, when it comes to town hall meetings or public input, usually they're, they don't have a lot of input when it comes to how many bunks, the size of the day functioned of apparatus. They want to make sure that when they make a call, that it comes to their house. They want it to function. Where they would have input typically is when, what is it, how does it fit into my neighborhood? How does it look? If there's a community function space, how would you envision using it? If it were here, would you use it for X, Y, Z? And be able to get feedback on how that space can be addressed and utilized? If that's a decision that the the council wants to have within these facilities. But usually most in the program, there's not, there's not a lot that they you would get input on. And it'd be hard traditionally to get a lot of input on that. Once you have these spaces selected, we would definitely bring in design options and ideas. We'd have, you know, obviously, when it comes to, you know, the public art aspect that the city has a strong stance on. And 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 we want to make sure, is there pieces that this can utilize within the neighborhood? That's where you would get a lot more input typically.
I think to be effective tonight, I'll just jump in here is let if we could keep focus our questions on what you heard tonight. What maybe you need more clarification on, what you would like more information on that we could bring back to you to keep the discussion moving forward.
Okay, I'm gonna throw out my other questions for later response because I agree, it's been a decent amount of time and brain energy on this for tonight. My other questions that would help me to understand some of the situation and help inform some decision making would be, I'm still trying to wrap my mind around the vehicles. In the tours, I was told that three percent of the calls involve fire. So I'm wondering about the ninety-seven percent of the calls that don't involve fire. And if there's ways to have smaller vehicles so that we can deal with two bays just fine and not have to send out the big truck when it's not necessary. Other question is about the old stations and what's going to be done with those if they could be used for some of the training spaces for community use. I'm still not clear about station three location. Sounds like we purchased the land next to it. Or I think we're talking about demolishing that one and maybe using both plots. I'm not really sure on station three location would be helpful for me to clarify. And then I would also love to hear more from those involved, maybe at a later time. What are the current public uses at the stations of, you know, who, how many, how often people come by for what purposes? I think those would be other helpful things for me to have answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Shonda, did you have questions tonight or?
I think you had answered the ability to like mix and match things. Because I see some things on like amplified that, you know, would be good in essential or, you know, vice versa. So I think what's the best way to say like, oh, I would like to see, you know, that family visiting room that's an amplified amplified also in the central. So like, how is the best way to convey that information?
I'll jump in, jump in here. So just like we talked last week, we're just now bringing you guys into what's been a long process. And so last week, when I was saying, you know, to set up a tour for you guys to go see some new facilities would help this tremendously. Because right now you guys are operating in a vacuum of anything we're talking about. So we have professional recommendations that we would like to bring to you that show all of that mix and match. And I think after we've done that and and we continue this scoping process. And you guys have an opportunity to see those facilities we're talking about so that we're all on the same page. Then we come back and like, you know, what Vince was saying with comparing us to the entire master plan, where we go from there would help you guys out. It's not fair to ask you guys to to take all this in to make those decisions without being able to see those things. So to answer the question, Grace and what you're saying, Shonda. I would ask that you allow us to make some of those professional recommendations and give you the background of why we're saying that. And that would give you the mix and match and and probably give you a better idea of what you. And that would give you the mix and match and and probably give you a better idea of what you guys would want to see added or subtracted.
Okay, yeah, that'd be good. Because it's it's hard to look at these Excel lines and try to imagine, you know, an actual building. So that would be good. Thank you.
I think it's important to understand too that Tim Cowan is really kind of our pivot point of information between, you know, staff and and council. So if you got specific questions, you can direct those to Carol or Tim.
It's time to say start pulling your lists together and then.
This is really the intent of this tonight is to get you guys talking to understand what what our deficiencies are, what our needs are, what our future growth needs may possibly be and how you guys can come into place to to help build upon that, so.
Jay.
I think many of my questions have already been asked, but I think maybe just clarifying something that Grace said that I I would be really interested in hearing more about from from our current fire department. What are the uses of of a pub or what would be the impact of having that community space, right? We are talking about somewhere that people are living. You know, if we're talking about having outside groups come in, that while that can be a benefit to the community also feels really disruptive. So I think having a bit more information about the impact and the staffing, what the implications would be for staffing of if we were creating this community training space would be helpful.
We've done multiple departments and facilities where there have been large community functions. Everywhere from remote training facilities for IFCE, upstate or downstate at the tune of 200 people training rooms or community rooms. Each of those facilities are completely isolated from the operations of the station. So if the the public would be able to come to the entry, they'd be able to get to the community room, they'd be able to get to public bathrooms and any other spaces like that. That could also be utilized for police department to show up and do a and get a statement from somebody from the city or other city departments. But at no point are they able to gain access, especially with what Vince is talking about with secure access control. You're never going to get into the actual operations. So the bays, you're never going to get into the actual living quarters. It is completely isolated even though it's on the same site. How it's being utilized and staffed in terms of if it's just if it's just city events or if it's true community events, that's something that I think feedback overall would be. And then how it's staffed or maintained at that point would also need to be considered. Similar to what Vince was talking about earlier is that needs to be also considered in the in the solutions.
Yeah, I mean, if we're if we're talking. If we are talking about community, community space, just think that somebody has to manage to maintain a schedule. And somebody has to answer the phone calls and deal with the requests from the public from that from that space. I mean, coming from managing the Civic Center, that was, we had three part-time employees just handing handling the calls, making the reservations. Someone has to write and define policies and procedures around how that space is used. Someone has to be there to physically unlock the doors and get folks orientated to the supplies and where's the paper, where's the restroom? And then somebody has to be there to lock the doors behind and and clean up. So from a community space, I want to say that is a significant new programmatic element that we're discussing putting in place when we just recently made the difficult decision with the with the Civic Center to say that we needed to refocus our limited resources elsewhere. So while there's a great benefit for the communities for these areas, just be mindful, like I mentioned, the the long-term operation and maintenance costs of of adding this in are are significant.
Yeah, thank you. That's some of what I was wondering about. And I I think again, just to reiterate, while it would be separate, you know, I think about like if you've got a neighbor in a neighboring apartment, that still has an impact on you, right? It impacts your parking, it impacts who's coming in and out. And so again, I think from that staffing perspective, making sure that, you know, you know, do making sure that we're listening to the experts in the room, but also that that we're thinking about all of our firefighters and what that means of, you know, adding that space in is important as well.
Okay, thanks. Mary Alice?
So one of my questions, I was hoping that you could expand upon in the, we have, what is the last one called? We got Enhanced and what's the Amplified, there we go, Amplified. You you had said that something about the the three bays, but then there was an outbuilding. I'm just trying to figure out because the the three bays is interesting. If the third bay, are you considering that to be the outbuilding or? No.
So no, actually, in the Amplified, you would have a total of, it's, we kind of had two options on the Amplified. You'd either have three bays.
Okay.
Or you would have two bays with an outbuilding. And the outbuilding was meant to not only cover the third bay, but the other operation functions that that Mike was talking about that's elsewhere on the on the city properties.
So it's an or?
It's an or, correct.
Okay, so because as I look at it, I was like, well, okay, can we just multiply, you know? You've got 2,000 feet for apparatus bays, do I just add another thousand, you know, 1,000 feet for the third bay? I was just trying to figure, you know, how those numbers work.
So so the idea is that in the Enhanced, you'd have the two. If it ends up saying the third one is appropriate, that's fine. Minimally, we would have the ability to add a third bay on to the Enhanced in the future, 20 years, whatever it is. So there would always be a planning for future growth, even if you only did the two bays in that solution. The third option or the other option with the Amplified is like I said, you include the three or you do the two with an outbuilding. And that is basically with when I was talking about that structural change in terms of how to build it. You're really talking at about almost, I I I'm going to say about half the cost per square foot. If, you know, half to a two-thirds of the cost per square foot, you can build that at compared to the main building.
Got it.
By the time you get the essential facility.
Wouldn't build the third bay, it would just give you the opportunity and the space would be designed so a third bay could be added on.
On-site, it would already have it shown that it could be added on in the future.
Okay, all right. I'm I'm kind of along the same lines as James was, which is, I think it makes sense to have six bunks. Given the new information about having the ability in the future to add in a third bay, it makes sense to go that route instead of just adding it now since we don't actually have the use for it other than borrowing space from the MTD and so forth. It really, the big question is with the community room. And I'm I'm kind of leaning towards maybe, we've talked about partnerships with other entities. You know, the Park District has an idea of putting something on that would be a really big community space in that area. They're staffing it, they're doing all those policies and procedures. I would much rather have us invest with them than try and build a standalone thing for us. That's kind of the direction that I'm thinking about right now.
One thing that, I'm going to jump in here too. Just, I I would ask the fire department to also just given, just a quick summary of the different functions in addition to fighting fires and responding to medical calls, like the technical rescue. You guys are the specialists in technical rescue. And it kind of gives you a bigger picture of what your equipment needs are.
Sure, yeah. I think, um, understanding that we can sit here all night long and talk about why we think we need the needs. But I think it's super important to understand, how did we get to this point in in the last 50 years since we built these fire stations? So just some fun little facts here, when we built these two fire stations in 68 and 71, that was the year we broke 600 calls. At the end of FY '22, we did 5,909 calls, okay? The only additions we've made to that is is one additional fire station that the University of Illinois has built and and provides about $2.3 million for staffing each year, which has really been a zero cost to the city. So with that, we we built our last station in 1972 and our staffing was 30 persons. We had 30 persons in chief, so 31. Today, we operate out of four stations with 65 persons. And the one thing I want to point out here as we talk about the increase in staffing is the benchmarks in the fire service. In the 1970s, early 70s, when these were built, it was just that, the guys went and put out fires. We had a lot more fires then than we do now because we didn't have the prevention efforts that we have now and the risk that reducing risk in our communities. But a big thing in 1973, the EMS Act was passed, which then started putting the requirements for ambulance services on local governments. And obviously, that came to the fire department. So in the mid 70s at the City of Urbana is when we started running EMS calls. That was probably, single-handedly in our in our complete history, the largest increase in call volume that that we've seen. So that that got us up from out of the hundreds into the thousands. Working to that now, I mean, I've already said, you know, we've, just in the last 20 years alone, going back to 2002, we've seen a 54 and a half percent increase in call volume from about 3,800 calls to, you know, just under 6,000. What has changed again in our recent time is 9/11. That's that's been a good benchmark of time. So about every 20 or 25 years, something big happens in in our in our society, in our world, that changes our jobs and our lives. We have technical rescue now. Some buildings fell down on 9/11 and frankly, the fire services in the communities had no no abilities or no hows or or were even prepared to handle something like that. The fire service sadly is not a proactive operation, we're more reactive. So so now we're reacting, we've had all this technical rescue. The City of Urbana was was chosen by the by the government to provide technical rescue for a two-county region around here. So we provide all the technical rescue relating to structural collapse, which can be involved tornadoes, any high angle vertical type rescues. We've got a lot of high rises going on on the other side of Wright Street. But, you know, we're the we're the responsible people for responding to these technical rescues. Hazardous materials. A big thing with hazardous materials that we all take for granted is 30, 40 years ago, all of our byproducts were were natural resources, wood, cotton, things like that, things that burned at much lower temperatures. The firefighters could handle those type of smoky environments better now. Well, now everything's made out of a chemical or out of a laboratory. So that's been a huge change to our our career. So we talk about all the cancer preventions and things. It's only been in the last decade that cancer research has really been found a good funding. And fortunately here, the University of Illinois is one of the leading researchers in cancer prevention for the fire service. So we get a lot of that coming in. Little things that we take for granted, like every home has a smoke detector now. Every home has a carbon monoxide detector now. What have those done? Why did we bring those in? Because we're having incidents. Now those incidents are being brought to our attention, so we have increasing calls. Your smoke detector's going off at 2:00 in the morning, we come out and take a look at that. Moving into even more current times is, you know, we have, we have other crises going on. We've now had to train for, you know, active shooter situations. We carry all this additional equipment on our apparatus and we can, we can go through the weeds a lot on why our fire apparatus are so much bigger. It's because of things like this, the additional equipment we have to carry. But, you know, not only we have personal protective equipment for active shooter situations, but we just have copious amounts of trauma gear that we have to have for any potential victims. We've got all the additional equipment and things for our opioid crisis that we're dealing with right now, our mental health crisis. I mean, this is everything that's driving our calls to the roof. So so from 1970s, when we built these fire stations to where we're at now, we've seen our call volume jump, whatever percentage that is, my gosh, from 600 to 6,000. And the question lies, just in 20 years, we've seen a 54% increase in call volume. What's what's the next thing? What's the next 20 years going to bring us? And the fire stations that we have now were built to essential standards. I think it's important for you guys to know that. These fire stations were not built at the enhanced level for what was going to be next. I can promise you that the people that sat in those seats before you in 1970, if they knew that the EMS Act of 1973 was coming out, they would have, they would have made better decisions. But in their defense and in your defense as well, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. We don't know what our community is going to expect of us. And and that's why we're trying to be proactive and be good stewards of the monies that, you know, need to be distributed. The the fire service is not the only service that we got to provide to this city. So it's just our job to sit here and try and let you know what our past needs have been and what we think our future needs are going to be.
Thanks, Mike.
Absolutely.
James, you better.
Yeah, this is real quick, between the the Enhanced and Amplified, there's like a change from 18 locker facilities to 21 locker facilities. What, who are the additional people in that picture?
Those are typically for callback or paid-on promises, additional gear. So when you have floaters that are running between different stations, they're bringing their gear with them.
So flexibility for additional people to work out of the space.
Or or loading up during an event. So typically, when we're building these stations, you're trying to give flexibility. All hands on deck because it's a blizzard, all hands on deck because of whatever others thing you can think of. Having the additional space so that everybody has a home for their gear and it's not just shoved in a corner or they have to put their gear in their car, personal car that has all the carcinogens in it. Give them a place to put things and that's what that's meant for.
And then for for the the station on campus, I assume that's a building asset of the University of Illinois. So we don't, it's not on our master plan and.
That's that's correct.
It's up to them to to avoid doing maintenance, just like it's up to us to avoid maintenance on our buildings, right?
Yeah, we we just provide the firefighters and the and the firefighting equipment.
Okay, and they and they fund that, they fund the labor, right?
Yeah, I think we're at 2.3 million this year is about what they're paying us.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
I wanted to be able to add one thing to what Mike stated. When you're talking about the future on things, we're always looking, it's what we do. We're always involved inside the fire service, trying to figure out what the next thing is. And the biggest item that you're seeing now is those sustainable items that are being, that are more prevalent. Things like lithium ion batteries. You saw the fire or you heard of the fire, I'm sure the industry had up in Morris, where they couldn't put it out for two weeks as they go through because nothing would put out those. You're seeing lithium ion batteries everywhere, solar panels. You're talking about additional weights and it's basically a power generator on roofs. So while there is a nicety of these sustainable actions, this is what the fire service is going to have to deal with more and more and more. And what is the next thing that they will have to deal with? And that is no different than what Mike stated. You know, that crystal ball, how do you look forward? You just want to make sure that these buildings are as flexible as possible so that they can ebb and flow with whatever the current conditions are.
And I would just add, back to technical rescue, it's also a service to the farm and agriculture community. And our, in fact, our firefighters just a couple of years ago received a life-saving award because they saved the life of a man trapped in a grain bin. So so we serve, we serve more than just the Urbana community.
We cover all of Champaign and Ford County as the primary response unit for any technical rescue. And to summarize that, that's that's confined space, that is structural collapse, that's below-ground rescues like trench collapse and any type of rope rescue, so.
Okay, yes, Shonda.
So I I wondered, just thinking about this community room and all of that, like, what sort of like, I mean, aside from everything else you do, what sort of like community outreach or anything that the current fire department does? Like, I mean, I've seen fire departments do like CPR classes and that could be the use for the training room in the community, like, things like that. Like, is there something that exists and it's being done now?
No, we we literally have no space to do it. In fact, we internally today, we're trying to decide what to do for Fire Prevention Week. With COVID, COVID having us take a hiatus of that, we talked about, hmm, you know, let's maybe do open houses at our fire stations. Sadly, I'll I'll use the South Station for an example. I can't have public to that fire station because if I've got someone within a mobility device, I don't have a restroom for them to use. These buildings are not handicapped accessible at all. So it's little things like that. So could we utilize space? Absolutely. Can we make it? I guess the intent was not to have a space for a neighborhood birthday party.
Right, no.
But to have a space that would work functional that if, you know, you needed to host an event within your ward for your people or we're having a public hearing because they're going to, you know, redo the interstate through Urbana and there needs to be some information displayed. Things that we would have traditionally used the community center in the past or the Civic Center, but not so much for private events, things that have some sort of public engagement attached to them.
That's exactly what I thought about this community room would be, not, you know, for birthday parties or whatever. know, for birthday parties or whatever, but for like community, safety, whatever.
Yes.
Because I think as we talk about prevention and like, you know, this increase in types of calls, like, there needs to be education and things like that for our community too. So like, I'm thinking that would be the reason to have such a space like this. Thank you.
James?
Yeah, I just want to add, before we moved into town, we lived in Edgewood and Edge Scott Fire Protection District, their, their fire station, they were where the Neighborhood Homeowners Association meeting was, they were polling place for the community. But they had, they had the space set up and, and if you've gone on the tour of the, of these buildings, and if you think about, you know, this, our Station 1, we've got these resources here. You think of Station 4, campus has much better like meeting space resources around it. Two and 3, there's just, there's nothing in there that, that you'd have space to invite the community in. It's like bringing someone into your, you know, dining room and your living room and trying to do that. You can do that, but it's not, it's not set up for it at all. But we got to see some of these things, as we talked about, to kind of know what we could do with it.
Okay. So I think we'll have the opportunity to tour some good examples of what we could have here, and that should help formulate ideas about what we want. And then we'll be waiting for professional recommendations from the chief and his team. Okay, thank you very much. This was all really helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, last item on the agenda is I will ask for a motion to go into closed session to discuss personnel, and this is pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 slash 2, paren C1.
I'll make a motion that we go into closed section for personnel based on what the mayor said the code was, the code number.
I'll second. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Just for viewers at home, we will immediately adjourn.
Have to do a roll call for that, but...
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody's forget. Roll call, please. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. We will adjourn immediately following the closed session. We'll come into open session and adjourn. I'll entertain a motion to come back into open session.
I'll make a motion that we come back into open session.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jaya. Will a clerk, clerk, please call the roll. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. And with no further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned.